The capacity has been reached. Admission into the meeting space will be closed. All audience members will be required to wear a mask at all times. Masks will be available upon request. All audience members will also undergo temperature screening before entering the meeting room. The regular meeting scheduled for December 17th, 2020 at 5:00 PM will be streamed live via YouTube. A link to watch the meeting can be found on the Board Docs website located on the school board website. HTTPS ebrschools.org about. A period for written public comment will be provided before the meeting as well as before each item is taken by the board on an action item. Individuals wishing to make a public comment about any of the posted action items will need to click on the Agenda Item in Board Docs and submit via the highlighted Public Comment hyperlink on the Agenda Item Details. Online comments are available for the public review and will be part of the meeting minutes. With that, like a call to order, or roll call? Roll call next. Invitation, I'm sorry, by Board Member Tatman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please rise. Gracious Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this board, for our staff, for administrators, for our families and for the students. We ask for you to be with us during this very special time of year as we celebrate the holiday season. We ask for you to be with us as we battle and deal with this COVID issue and continue to guide us and help us be safe and make good decisions. As a board lord, help us to do what is best for children. Help us to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars and help us to be good people in your image and in your likeness. We ask all of these things in your precious name. Amen.
Amen. And the pledge of allegiance will be led by Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Talia Brady of Tara High School accompanied by Colonel Fulton Johnson.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
To the Board President, Mr. Goday. Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Smith, and Board Members and fellow citizens. It's certainly an honor and a privilege to have an opportunity to introduce an outstanding student to you from Tara High School. That's going to lead in the pledge today. She's a senior in her fourth year and JROTC as a key leader. She is also a mentor and a great role model for students at Tara High School. She is a member of the JROTC winning, award-winning National Drill Team. She's commander of the Color Guard Team and the Battalion Commander of the Trojan Strong JROTC Battalion. She leads by example in everything she does. She holds a 4.2 GPA and number two in her senior class. After graduating this spring, she plans to attend Texas A&amp;M or Southern University to major in pre-medicine, followed by becoming a doctor, a pediatrician. She is the daughter of Mrs. Terrica and Gerald Brady. Ladies and gentlemen, here to lead us in our pledge today is Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Talia Brady. Talia?
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So with this new COVID environment, I can't wrap this around your neck, but on behalf of the superintendent and the entire school board, we wanted to give you a superintendent's medal. We're very proud of all of your work. Thank you. Keep up the good work and thank you for your leadership.
Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the roll call. Madam Secretary.
District 7, President Goday.
Here.
District 3, Vice President Howard.
President.
District 1, Mr. Blue.
Here.
District 2, Mr. Lannis. District 3, Ms. Collins.
Present.
District 5, Ms. Ware Jackson. District 6, Ms. Dyson. District 8, Ms. Bernard.
Present.
District 9, Mr. Tatman.
Present. Thank you. We do have a court. Next is Item C1. Approval of the School Board Minutes of November 19, 2020, Regular Board Meeting and December 3rd, 2020 Committee of the Whole Meeting as published in the Official Journal. Do I have a motion? So moved by Mr. Howard, a second by Mr. Blue. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, any comments or questions from the audience? Madam Secretary, do you have any audience cards? Thank you. Back to the board, any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Madam Secretary?
Please vote.
Ms. Collins, are you in? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Bernard, are you in? In, not in Teams, in Board Docs. Mr. Blue?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Collins? Mr. Goday?
Yes.
Ms. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Tatman?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Next is Item D1, Student of the Year. Recognition of the 2021 East Baton Rouge Parish School System Students of the Year. Is Mr. Joffreyon, you will be presenting this? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board. I am excited to announce that we had 79 students selected for Student of the Year this year. District personnel, members of the community and business leaders accepted the charge to pick this year's Student of the Year. The State Department requires that the district has a Student of the Year for the district and a district charter Student of the Year. So this year, we have a total of six Students of the Year. These individuals were picked and their names will be submitted to the State Department for the next round of votes. And these students are... For District Elementary, we have Dev Iyer from Buchanan Elementary. Our District Middle's, I'm sorry, our District Charter Elementary student is Jacosten Kelly from J.K. Haynes Charter School. Our District Middle Student of the Year is Ashawar Nair from Glasgow Middle School. And our District Charter Middle School Student of the Year is Epiphany London from Inspired Charter Academy. Our High School District Student of the Year is Emily Boulder from Baton Rouge Magnet High School. And our District Charter High School Student of the Year is Faith Woods from Mentorship Steam Academy. And we would like to congratulate all of those students for such a great job of just interviewing. Their portfolios were outstanding. They are some stellar candidates and hopefully they will bring the student, the state student of the year home to East Baton Rouge Parish. If you were able, yesterday, we did premiere the Student of the Year video. That was a lot of work, but a lot of fun. But I want to thank Mr. Holmes, Andrew Holmes, and Mr. Derek Kyle from Astroma High School who filmed the entire program. I also want to thank John Passerack from WBRZ who hosted along with Mr. Goday for your great words and our superintendent, Mr. Smith. And that's all we have.
Thank you, Mr. Joffreyon, and I'd like for us to give a round of applause to these students. They really deserve it. And it's unfortunate at this time that we can't have them here in person to celebrate their accomplishments, but I guarantee you that every member of the board fully wishes them the best and congratulates them on their hard work.
Most definitely.
Thank you. Next, since Mr. Joffreyon is still here, is Holiday Greeting Card Contest Winners.
Every year again, I just love all of these annual accolades we can give. Each year, the Fine Arts Department holds a parish-wide holiday greeting card design contest. One elementary, one middle and one high school entry is selected for our district's annual holiday greeting cards, mailed to district stakeholders and supporters. As you know, and I hope you all enjoyed the cards that you received at the Kyle and they were, for those of us who did not see them, who will get a chance to see them in a minute, they were some outstanding cards. So at this time, we would like to acknowledge those winners and just show you how those greeting cards looked. Our elementary winner, believe it or not, is Dev Iyer, who is also our elementary student of the year. He is from Buchanan Elementary School and that is his holiday card. Our middle school student is Alexandra Hernandez from Park Forest Elementary and her teacher, Ms. Salma Hassan, helped, well, not helped, but I guess guided her with that beautiful card there. And our high school student is Victoria Williams from Baton Rouge Magnet High. Her teacher is Mr. Seaton Estes and this is her card, which I actually love the detail that these kids put in. I'm sorry, I did not announce I've arts teacher at Buchanan, that's Kelly Haskew. And those are our winners for this year's holiday card.
Thank you very much and we appreciate very much the cards from the students. And again, it's a regret that we cannot have them here in person to congratulate them on their outstanding work. As a person who's an engineer with zero artistic talent, I appreciate their abilities on making these cards. Thank you very much.
I'm truly jealous of myself. I can't draw a straight line, but I admire them.
I can't even draw a straight line.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Region 4 Institutional Energy Management Award. East Baton Rouge Parish School System has been selected by Association of Energy Engineers as a Region 4 Institutional Energy Management Award winner for 2020. I assume you're Mr. Savwa.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. Well, since Mr. McCann and Mr. Smith are not in the room, Mr. Goday, would you want to accept the award on behalf of the school district? Superintendent Smith, President Goday and members of the board, my name is Don Savwa. I'm the Director of the Energy Management Program for the school district. It's my pleasure to present the Association of Energy Engineers Regional Institutional Energy Management Award for 2020 to the East Baton Rouge Parish School System. The Association of Energy Engineers, which I'm a member, is an international professional society that each year seeks out the good work that is being done in energy management and recognizes those organizations that stand out from the rest. The Energy Management Program here was selected above other entries from across Region 4, which includes 13 states. Our program is being recognized for the significant accomplishments it has achieved since its inception in 2007, mainly by reducing the district's energy use of electricity and natural gas as well as its resulting carbon footprint by 33%. This translates to over $46 million in utility cost avoidance over that period of time. That's money that's been freed up to support other educational priorities and also demonstrates being good stewards of the public money. Additionally, the program has gotten some additional recognition as well. It's contributed to four U.S. Department of Education Green Ribbon School Awards so far. It's got an EPA Energy Star National Building Competition winner, that was Claiborne Elementary School. And so far to date, we have 31 Energy Star Building Certifications, the latest being Broadmoor Elementary School. To explain why the Energy Management Program is successful, it comes down to actions and people. The four main objectives of the program is active management and monitoring of utility consumption, define and eliminate waste, to drive and motivate the efficient day-to-day use and operation of the facilities, to promote and collaborate on energy-efficient facility design standards for new construction projects, and lastly, to engage and educate all stakeholders to continually promote and influence energy-efficient behaviors in order to nurture and sustain a culture of energy awareness and conservation. So people drive the program's success. First, we start out with a skilled team and it's made up of Sandra Liscano, Dwayne Wilkinson, Adam Price and Mother Saffontino. School staff and student support, which is very important. Demetrius Wells and Leon Kaler and the air mark custodial and the facilities operations, as well as the CSRS project managers. So on behalf of the Energy Association of Energy Engineers, congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
It is always very nice to receive an award like that and it also is a learning moment for the students about what can be done to help conserve energy and cut carbon emissions. So thank you very much for that. Next, we have Item E for information only, the Monthly Financial Report. All board members receive that and it's open to the public. Is there any comments from the board on the monthly financial report? The only comment I'd make is I have seen, you know, we watched very closely the sales tax collections and year-to-date, our sales tax collection is still up slightly from the prior year. So we hope that trend continues. Next, for information only, is the personnel changes. Any questions or comments from the board about personnel changes? Seeing none, we will move to Item F, an update from the superintendent and our superintendent is visiting with us today remotely. So, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Goday. Can you guys hear me?
Speak a little louder.
Thank you. Goday, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Go, President Goday. My superintendent's report, I would like to, the third annual EBRF Tree went virtual this year. It was a huge success. Close to 180 EBR homeless students received presents from members of the community. I would like to thank everyone involved for making this holidays a little extra special for our students. Once again, our child nutrition department will deliver box meals to our families over the winter break. Meal boxes will include a combination of fresh bag bread, cereal, frozen entry, canned fruit and vegetables, and milk to prepare five meals, which will be breakfast, lunch, dinner, snacks for students. If parents, if you are interested, please go to our website at ebrschools.org to register for these deliveries. I want to remind the listening audience and viewing audience that just remind, the winter break officially begins Monday, December 21st and January through January 4th. January 4th will be a professional development day for teachers and students who are attending virtually and face-to-face learning will return, will return on January 5th, 2021. And Mr. Goday, finally, I would just like to finally just wish all of our families and employees a great winter break and a happy new year. Please stay safe, take care of yourselves, your families, and I look forward to seeing you in 2021. Thank you, Mr. Goday.
Thank you, sir, and I'm sure the whole board here wishes you and your family a Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Any comments for the interim superintendent? Seeing none, we will go to reports from Board Appointees to committees and agencies. Are there any comments or questions from the, any reports from any of the board members for this item? Seeing none, we'll now move to unfinished business. Consideration of requests for the approval of professional services contract between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and the Emerge Center for 2021-2022. Mr. Shamlin, are you on the line, sir?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Yes, sir.
All right, yes. This contract comes to the board from Emerge. It is a renewal scheduled, if approved, to begin July 1 of 2021. The contract is for an amount of $425,000 to provide services. For clarity, the contract is with the Emerge Center, which then provides support to the Emerge School. The appendix to the contract lays out the specific services and I'll take any questions.
Are there any questions from the board? I am not seeing a request to speak working here. I'm sorry? Oh, I need a motion. I'm sorry. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Blue. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Tatman. At this time, I would like to call Ms. Whittle to come up to the microphone and just give a brief overview.
Alright. Thank you, sir. First, I'd like to thank all of you for recognizing last meeting the positive impact Emerge has had on the children within our community. I know you all recognized it. Some of you emailed me, contacted me and thanked us for the work that we have. We have and continue to provide for the children within our community during this time. I hope that you guys can support us, support Emerge and with this additional funding request so that we can move forward to complete our charter next year and during that time, we can work together to look toward other funding opportunities. I know I sent you each an email yesterday looking at a potential opportunity that we would like to explore further with you and there are other opportunities that are out there to meet the funding needs. So again, I hope that you support us. Our families within the community truly need a center of excellence for children who have autism in order for them to move to the next level and be integrated into our community schools within the Baton Rouge School District.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Mr. Tatman?
That was an accident.
Okay. Ms. Collins?
Can I, I need some clarity with a few things before I decide. Emerge is one of the only new charters I ever voted on because on the surface, it looked good.
Ms. Collins, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. Emerge was one of the only new charters I have voted to approve and as I'm learning more things, I'm growing more and more disappointed. The financial model is not, does not appear to be sustainable and I have learned that since the time of the approval of the charter, Emerge had been advised to be careful about taking that approach and here we are with this particular item to vote on more funds and it gives me great pause, especially after I visited, spoke one-on-one and then on the day of the board meeting, when the item first came onto the Committee of the Whole, it was presented very differently to me than what was presented in person. And so I have gotten to a place where I'm very uncomfortable continuing to support Emerge in this way. I have questions around, once you look at... And it's not necessarily anyone's place to say how a charter should hire in their infrastructure and their organizational model, but with only 48 babies, to have a CEO and a principal and then say you can't pay is hard. So can you clarify those things for me?
Most definitely. First of all, the CEO salary is, does not hit the Emerge School for Autism salary structure. That is completely within the Emerge Center. We have three corporations and within that, we have the Emerge School, the Emerge Foundation and the Emerge Center.
Okay.
The salaries that hit, I'm glad you brought up salaries because we have six teachers. We have 10 assistants. We have one special education coordinator and one executive director slash principal. The teacher salaries that we have are 25% below that of EBR. Our administrative salaries are 18% below EBR. So I know, help me to understand what, what gives you pause, Ms. Collins?
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much for clarifying the thing, the CEO, because then it's not just CEO of the school with 48 students, it's CEO of the joint.
Right. And may I clarify something else, ma'am? Whenever you, as we discussed last time, our children come to us through a system in which they are picked by a computer. We do not pick the children. It's a random selection process. Several of our children do not, have never received therapy services before. They have never been in a setting to where they had occupational therapy, speech therapy, ABA services, none of that. When we receive these children, 100% of our time, at times, it's a one-on-one interaction for months at a time till we can move to a, from this intensive structure of one-to-one to a two-to-one ratio to a three-to-one is what we'd like to see. So, yes, we do have quite a bit of staff. But let me also share another thing with you. When you have children of this nature that need a lot of care, you have to, children that can't sit in a chair because they've never had therapy, children that can't feed themselves, it's a lot of work upfront. It really is. So, you know what I do? When you speak about salaries, every day at lunchtime, for two and a half to three hours, not on the school's budget but on our center, I send three staff members. Three staff members that are charged, that their salaries come out of a different company. Three hours a day, five days a week. So, when you start looking and adding that up, we do spend a lot more because our children need it. We don't have the funding that comes directly from the school. But as you said, those babies, as long as Emerge thinks, they're not going to go without the critical services that they need.
And so, I thank you very much. And I, I do personally appreciate an intensive model, as you explained. But I also, to help me to understand what, when you're doing 25% less than the district for a teacher in the classroom, it causes me concern that you may end up with, and I understand why, because you have such an intensive model, which I think, I mean, I don't have enough sped understanding to know what's too much or too little. I will not pretend. But buying into the concept of students needing intensive intervention with your goal being, not only have they not necessarily received services before, but also, it was you all explained to me that your goal is, let's get the babies onto their home campus. So, I get, I think I get conceptually intense instruction in the.
It is very, you have to have very intensive instruction in order to move the children from that environment to a less restrictive environment. And our goal is to transition those students as soon as possible.
Help me understand, what is, do you, what is your teacher turnover rate when you have a difficult time?
I have a very dedicated staff. Our teachers would not be in the roles they are unless they love their work, they love their children, these children. They are very satisfied at being at Emerge because they get, they get to see the children blossom, they bloom. They're, they are side-by-side with the parents and the therapy team, working closely with the children so that they can transition them to the next level. I mean, it's a blessing to see a child leave our center and we, leave our school and move to a less restrictive environment. And it was because of us that that child is successful. And like I've said before, it's, it's, it's not just the child, it's the family. And we have a couple of families here tonight that want to share their stories. And it's pretty amazing when you think about the gift that we're able to give to these families and that working with their children, moving them to the next level, it's truly, it's unbelievable. And we have the most exceptional staff. And I mean, I could not be happier with the work that they do.
With the teachers and the in-class support staff, so each classroom has a teacher, teacher, right? And then, and I forget the title you gave when I visited, but it's more than one adult in each classroom, correct?
Yes, sometimes, like I had shared with you, our goal is basically because of the cognitive abilities of our children, we will have an average three-to-one. A lot of our restricted environments are a two-to-one on student-to-teacher ratio, but we do have those that have to be a one-on-one at times. And so, that's why we have the number of staff that we, that we currently have.
And again, uh.
And let me share another thing with you in that, when you look at our model, you look at our children, of 48 children, we have 29 of those children that are nonverbal and are using assistive devices to communicate. And having a child, training a child to use this device to tell you, hey, I'm hungry, or I need to go to the restroom, or I need a break, just to express the simple things that are needed. I mean, that's very, very intensive.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have in this moment. I do still have concern around teachers getting 25% less.
Well, that's just a number I wanted to throw out because when we start talking about the amount of salaries and the amount of staffing, I want folks to understand that our teachers are at Emerge because they love what they do. And they love the children, and they like to see the progress of the children in being able to say, hey, I was a part of that. I made a difference in that child's life. And that's what I feel teaching is all about.
And I actually don't doubt that. The concern though is, often, the frontline worker is the one that when cuts or when there are, when folks have to figure out how to cut expenses, then that's who gets hit. And so, that's where my concern comes from. But I appreciate you explaining to me and clarifying, especially the CEO piece. Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions before I move away?
And, well, we do have some people on the queue, so you might as well stay there in case they do.
Okay.
Mr. Howard?
Yes, thank you, President Godey. Can you hear me? Thank you, President Godey. So, my question is really, not really a question, maybe a comment or concern for Mr. Shamlin. The contract currently sits at $250,000. The increase is acting as for an additional 175,000. I would be more comfortable if we were maintaining the contract where it was, but I can't, in my mind, support the increase because I don't believe that it's sustainable for the things that we are having within the school. There's not going to be an increase in kids, and we don't see, in my mind, I don't see the model becoming sustainable. From the onset of the contract, I think the question, or the concern should have been about sustainability. So, I would support keeping the contract at the rate that it is now, but I can't support this additional 175,000 increase. So, it's not a comment, not a concern, I mean, not a question, but just a concern that I would uplift to the board, to the staff, and everyone else. Thank you.
Mr. Baloo.
Thank you. I, obviously, I made the motion, so I do support the change in the contract. And I just want to point out, you know, from talking to Mr. Shamlin and to clarify, and I think I've got it right, but the way our initial contract, the services that were included as part of the individual education plan mirrored what our, our third-party specialist provided at other schools. And the Emerge model is much more intensive. And so, as part of the change in the contract, we allowed additional services in the hopes that, you know, those services could be reimbursed by Medicaid. And some of those additional services will be reimbursed, but I think, I believe there are a couple that, that we found out since will not be reimbursed by Medicaid. So, although we're increasing the hard cap by 170,000, $75,000 from talking to Mr. Shamlin, we couldn't, we couldn't put a number as to how much we'll actually wind up paying because we don't, just don't know how much those non-reimbursable services will amount to. But, you know, Emerge is such a, a unique school, not only in the state but nationwide. And, you know, I think we're three years into it now, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah. And, you know, I would hate to, you know, pull the rug out from under them now. I think we ought to allow, you know, another year to make sure we work together and get it right as far as the funding and, you know, if anyone on the board has any reservations, if there's something small, you know, I'd be willing to consider a friendly amendment if you want to change anything, make any small changes. But I'd like to see the school, school move forward, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baloo. Seeing no other comments on the board, are there any comments from the audience, the in-person audience? Sir, would you please state your name? And when you start, and I want to tell the audience that we will be enforcing the three-minute time limit.
Bradley Kavanaugh. My son, Brooks, attends Emerge. I don't know if any of y'all have children. I'm assuming that some of you do. The sound of their voice, a look in their eye, the things that all of you find in this moment difficult to look at me as I say these things, and you stare at a computer, are the same things I feel. My son has never said his name or my name. And when Brooks was born, he failed a hearing test at the hospital, and we were told that that simply was just probably fluid in the ears, to which we later found out, he had about a 35% permanent hearing loss. Autism, people speak of being on the spectrum. When your child is at a private school that costs $12,000 a year, you think that that's going to be the answer, and you realize that they're in a corner in a jump-jump for five hours a day because the teachers don't know what to do with that child. So, then you move him to a school that does just ABA therapy, that's insurance-driven along with about a $6,000 a year premium that you pay, and you find out that they don't do anything other than ABA therapy. When you find a school like Emerge, whose teachers clearly are there for the love of special needs to deal with a child that has seizures when he has a fever, he's intellectually disabled, he wears braces to try to walk, the only word he knows in life is "good." And it goes like this. It is incredibly important that when you, as a parent, find a school like this for your child, and you realize, this is so much wrapped into one, to give my son the greatest chance at life, you'll do anything for it. So, if this school has to go private, and you're open to it being a privileged-only school that if you can afford your child to have care, they can attend. And when 95% of that school drops next year because we don't have the funding or the time to say, go find ample funding next time you come to us, you too will have given the same privilege that we all fight so hard for in life, to have equality, diversity, all the incredible things of 2020 that we're all working for, men, women alike, you too will be siding with privilege because those will be the only children of Baton Rouge who are able to afford to go to a school like this. This is more than a school. This is so much more. I'd give anything to hear my son speak. That's probably three minutes.
Yes. Thank you, sir.
That you listen actively, not waiting for the next thing to say. Actively listening tonight, please.
Thank you, sir. Please state your name, sir, please.
Who's my name? I'm sorry.
And when the yellow light comes on, you have one minute left, and then when the red light comes on, the mic will be cut.
Perfect.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Mike Pritchard. My son goes to the Emerge Center, Emerge School. My son's name is Micah. He's a six-year-old boy with autism. He was diagnosed very early on. And he has been at the Emerge Center, or Emerge School for two years, and he was at the Emerge Center before then. My son is completely nonverbal. We have never heard him say my name, haven't heard him say a lot of things. But Emerge helped him to ultimately be as successful as he is today. He started off going to therapy, occupational therapy, speech therapy, ABA, and all these things all in one place so that he could succeed. Something I never thought I would see him to even talk about, him going to a different school, or what school he could even possibly go to. Emerge has been there to get him on his first AAC device, and that's so important to us because now he can tell us when he's hungry, or tell his teacher when he's got to go to the bathroom, or just when he's sad. He will, whenever he's having a bad day, he'd say, I want sad police, is what he tells us when he's having a rough day. Now, just with the success of the Emerge School, we're having conversations with his teachers and the team at Emerge that my son could transition to a program with neurotypical peers. That's something I never even thought was possible with a kid who can't speak. So, we are so excited that he's part of that. Emerge is intensive, it's early-focused. By providing this care for these kids early on, they stand a chance to be able to move and exceed in life and to be with their neurotypical peers and be with other students and not just be the kid who's sitting in a corner or in these programs that are outside of the classroom. Sorry, a little bit nervous going through my notes. So, that's what makes Emerge so different. They have therapy in school in one place. We don't have to, you know, pick up my son to go take him to therapy somewhere else in the middle of the day, which impacts parents with jobs. That's all available in the Emerge Center. They, you know, bring therapists in there to help the kids out, they need extra therapy on top of what's in IEPs, and we can get that all done in one place. Emerge also even helped roll out AAC devices into East Baton Rouge Parish, so we can even get those into IEPs so that my son, when he does transition out of Emerge, can bring his device with him and be able to communicate with his teachers outside of Emerge. So, just want to finally say, these kids have worked very hard, harder than a lot of kids their age. They deserve to see their hard work through. Emerge not getting this funding is going to impact families across backgrounds, like I said, whether, even if kids, parents can't afford to send them to private school, people with jobs and stuff like that might not be able to give them the therapy they need. It's, it's a tough decision to put kids in, I mean, parents in their place, so, please.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Kristi Hamlin-McDaniel. My son, Christopher, is nine years old, and he has been at Emerge since he was about two and a half. He started out with the Emerge Center and has transitioned into the Emerge School for Autism. Christopher is nonverbal. A lot of the children that do go to the Emerge School for Autism are nonverbal, but the ability to be able to integrate with verbal children has helped Christopher tremendously. Not having a situation where there are a whole bunch of neurotypical children and maybe a few autistic children has also helped Christopher. Eventually, he will get to a point where he'll be able to assimilate better with neurotypical children. But for right now, the best thing for Christopher is to learn in an environment with children like him. He learns by watching and seeing what his peers are doing and taking cues from them, and he also learns from his incredible teaching staff. Christopher would completely lose about a whole year of what he's learned in school if he didn't have Emerge, if he had to go into the public school system. And I fear that a lot of other children would also have the same circumstances. I don't know what we would do without Emerge. It frightens me to have him in a neurotypical setting with, with other kids. He did temporarily attend a pre-kindergarten in a STEM class, and they didn't do anything other than babysit him all day. And I am concerned that we would go back to that. And he's so smart, and he's so loving and happy. I feel that it would just fail him, and I don't think it would give him a chance. That's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you. give him a chance. That's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next.
Good evening. My name is Jo, I'm still on her time. Does that matter?
I have to set it?
Oh, sorry, it's reset. So my name is Joseline Carter. I have a son, his name is Adon, who attends the Emerge School for Autism. Prior to being accepted into Emerge School, he was a child, a student in their Bloom Program, which is with the Emerge Center. What I want to share with you is the experience that I had looking for a facility had we not been accepted into the Emerge School for Autism. I went to several institutions to try to see the services that were provided. When my son was diagnosed, he was diagnosed probably three months before his birthday, which, so he was a little over two and a half, so he had one month of early steps by the time we had all the evaluation conducted. Early steps gave him speech therapy one day, once a week, and occupational therapy once a month, or once every other month. My son is nonverbal. He couldn't hold a pencil, couldn't feed himself, and he was about to be three years old, okay? Once we got into the Emerge Center, I saw his potential skyrocket, and it was because of the attention that was provided to him by specialized therapeutic resources that they offer, that they're trained in. I appreciate the hard work that the East Baton Rouge Parish School System does for our children, but I know that they are stretched to their limits. And it is not impossible, but it is very difficult when you have a child that has the amount of needs and that requires the attention that it does, like my child does. And whenever I was thinking about this, I went to the Dunham School to see what they're, what they could offer. $26,000 for the services that I'm getting at the Emerge School. The REACH Cent, the REACH Program through the parochial system, $14,000 for the exact same services that I'm getting from the Emerge Center, okay? What you have done has ultimately, by approving this charter initially, was a huge blessing for this community that has 1 in 56 children with autism, okay? That is a huge blessing, and now it seems like a carrot that is being dangled in front of us because of the risk of it being taken away. That, that is what I'm dealing with. That is what I'm dealing with, looking at the people that my son goes to school with, who will not be able to continue in that.
Thank you, ma'am. Next. Please state your name.
Yes, my name is Lorian Quo. My daughter, Arwin, is eight years old, and she attends the Emerge School for Autism. She has been receiving services through Emerge since she was diagnosed with autism around the age of two. And I actually, I also have a son with autism, and he receives services going all the way back to the Baton Rouge Speech and Hearing Foundation. So I have watched them grow, from the Baton Rouge Speech and Hearing Foundation, to the Emerge Center, and now the Emerge School. And for me and my family, the entire organization has been like a refuge in a storm. It's hard to explain how difficult it can be to raise two children with autism. You love them so much, and you want the whole world for them, but you feel like you have no instruction manual for how to help them. And you can feel very isolated from sort of normal families because your children can't participate in normal things due to sensory behaviors and other problems, and Emerge has just, they've always been there for us. My daughter, Arwin, she's eight years old. She is beautiful and brilliant and hilarious and creative, but she cannot hold a conversation with you most of the time. Now, Arwin, when she first began at Emerge School, she, she can talk, but it's basically like she can list lots of names of animals and things like that, but she couldn't tell you, you know, if she was happy or sad. Now, I have seen so much progress since she started. She speaks to me in complete sentences. That's something I never thought she would be able to do. It's, the thing with autism is, there's no, you know, cure, there's no magic pill. What there is, is just this intensive, one-on-one therapy. It does work. Autismous spectrum, all the children are different, and they all have a different, you know, potential inside them, and I feel like that's what Emerge sees. I know y'all are saying, why so few students and so many staff? It's because that's what it takes. I have seen it with my own eyes, not just in my kids, but in the other kids who attend Emerge as well. I will see them making progress. And even if it's small progress, just anything that can improve their quality of life, improve their ability to communicate, their ability to function, you know, we always say, you got to remember, kids with autism grow up into adults with autism, and this community will have to help provide care for them when they are adults. And so, reaching them now when they're young and their minds are still developing, I just, I feel like they have unlimited potential just to have a better quality of life, and that is what Emerge has provided for us, and I really think it's a model for what schools for children with autism should be. So, I'm just asking you, please provide them with the funding. It's been so much a blessing for me.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any other public comments?
Hi, I'm Shanna. This is Lance.
You always still only get three minutes if you should.
That's okay. Our son, Jackson, attends Emerge. He's eight years old. He is nonverbal. He's attended the Emerge Center since he was two. We have been lucky to get him early services. Jackson still has a lot of issues that we fight. One of the things that we fight are meltdowns. I know your question, Ms. Collins, was the amount of teachers per students. You know, when Jackson needs extra care, there's someone to take him out to the playground, to help him calm down, or take him to the OT gym, to help him with whatever he's going through. He has feeding issues, that they can provide extra people to help him with his feeding. You know, he's still not potty-trained at eight years old, that they have people that make sure that he's getting cared for. I don't think that he would get that at other places. And if you don't have a kid that goes through that, you don't know what it takes to have the people at Emerge provide the loving care that they do to your child. I communicate more than three times a week with Jackson's teacher on how his progress is, and what we can do to help him with his feeding and potty-training and all this, and we, she does that because she wants to help him, not because she has to. You know, I mean, I guess that's what I want y'all to know, is that they, they love our kids, and they want to help our kids.
Yep, and I just want to express my gratitude for, you know, the last three years that my son's been there, and just how much of a big difference that it's made in our lives. And just the thought of him, you know, not being able to go to a school where all of his peers are, you know, just like him in that sense is, you know, really just terrifying for us, and...
And everybody there has the same diagnosis. You know, you go to a normal school, and you don't know how your kid's going to be treated when they can't talk, or they're not potty-trained, and that's scary for a child, for parents with a child with special needs. So that's something I ask y'all to consider of, where do they go if this place doesn't exist?
Thank you. Mr. Finney?
Thank you. I'm sure Emerge is a great school, but on the other hand, I've never had parents come up and say that their school was horrible. So, of course, the parents that are well-served by that school think it's great. My concern is that Emerge signed a contract that said, for the amount per student that you get at a type-one school, they could educate these students with philanthropy making up the rest of the shortfall, because we all know that it's going to be more than 10,000 or 12,000 a kid. I would hope that there's a long-term plan for making this thing financially sustainable, and that it works for all the autistic kids that need services, not just those that happen to win the lottery at Emerge. So if you approve this as a finish this year, you know, so be it, but I don't think it's a good budgetary process you want to follow long-term. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Finney.
Hey, my name's Tad DeSohnier. I've got a son, Ian DeSohnier, that goes to the Emerge School. The Emerge Center has been a part of my family since November of 2016. I have four children, two of which are diagnosed with autism, and I've previously experienced two separate therapy clinics and three other programs offered by local schools, local programs, before discovering the blessing that is the Emerge Center, and I'm here to say that there is nothing in this community that's like Emerge. They have given us hope. The staff has consistently been there through every single step of both my boys' journey, and for that, I am forever grateful. Ian has received group and individual speech therapy in the beginning, and was enrolled for two years in the Bloom Program, and he is now in his second year with the Emerge School. My younger son was enrolled for one year in the Bloom Program and has since moved to a local homeschool group for kindergarten. Ian can speak, but he's not going to have a conversation with you. He has icolalia, so when you ask him a question, he's going to repeat what you said. He struggles with his emotions, and he needs a lot of assistance to keep him from self-harm. He is one of many kids that benefits greatly from the one-on-one therapy in extremely small groups that Emerge. He requires a lot of queuing and reminding, and needs assistance to stay in his chair at his desk for any extended period of time. Every day with him can be different. His good days are amazing, and his tough days are incredibly challenging. And all of these things, Emerge never falters. When I drop him off, I know he's going to be taken care of without any judgment. I know he is happy, and I know he is being challenged and worked with. He's being shown kindness, acceptance, and respect, and both of my boys have made tremendous advances with the help of Emerge. Ian is my first child, and at four years old, he learned to repeat my wife and sign that I love you. Emerge has done a ton for us. I'm not going to read everything I've got. I think every, all the other parents have covered it, and I feel like it's obvious that, that they have an incredible impact on all of us who have children with autism. They've done incredible things for us, and I would do anything to keep my children there. Like a lot of the other parents, it scares me to think about putting my children somewhere else, because I know what they're given there, and I know that they're taken care of, and that means everything to me and my work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other members of the audience? No, you've already spoken.
Can I, can you say, I would like to address what you say, say?
Yes, go ahead. Quickly.
Mr. Finney spoke to sustainability. Yesterday, I emailed you guys about a method of sustainability. When Emerge first filed the application, one of the areas that we asked for was the ability to look at high-cost services. If we looked at high-cost services, my estimates are, if they were filed and filed correctly, we would receive over $400,000. This is something that we've gotten pushback on, that we were not allowed to do. And so, I implore you to please, let's move forward and, and work on high-cost allocation. It's not just going to benefit Emerge. Look at my numbers. Look what we pulled together. It benefits all the children of EBR. Also, as far as the parents, looking at the financial situation of our parents, only two children will be able to continue at Emerge. So, when we look at diversity, we're 75% of our children are non-white. We are, we are truly an environment that nurtures children. There are ways to make us sustainable. There are ways that I wish you guys would entertain, that you would explore, and that we don't have to let these children and these parents down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no more from the audience, are there any more comments from the board? Ms. Bernard?
Thank you, Mr. Goday.
Put your mic on, please. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Goday. I can support this only if we either accept a friendly or a substitute motion, that we would amend the contract to include services only reimbursable by Medicaid, including speech, OT, and PT. Ms. Lopez, can you clarify for me the reimbursements?
Yes, ma'am. The Medicaid reimbursements are for speech therapy, occupational, and physical therapy, which the Emerge Center provides speech and occupational therapy only to the students of the Emerge School. The district actually provides the physical therapy for one of their students, and we are reimbursed at 65% of the cost.
So the reimbursement is only at 65%, so we cover the other 35%?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Before you leave, could you give a comment about the high-needs allocations that we're not going after right now, from what I understand?
Well, sure. High-cost services is what she's speaking of. The Louisiana Department of Ed actually sets high-cost services for us. We don't get that choice, and it's at $37,000 per student. Currently, with the IEPs and the special ed rate and everything, these students receive $14,485 per student.
Is that per student for us?
That would be for, for the Emerge School.
Okay.
Which is higher, because they are all special ed. Typically, our children that receive high-cost services are extremely medical fragile students, who are in wheelchairs, who may have feeding tubes, who require a registered nurse all day long to be with them, or cannot attend school, so they have a nurse at home, and then our teachers actually go to them. But since they are on, being educated at that time, it becomes our responsibility to cover the registered nurse. For example, we have three students that we just signed a contract for $90,000 for nursing services for. These students would qualify for high-cost services because of the cost of educating and their medical fragility. So, we don't get to make that choice. It's how much we have to spend on the child medically, and the Emerge students don't qualify because they don't reach that level.
But all of the Emerge services are in their EIP?
Yes, the IEP, yes.
Okay, thank you. So we would be required to provide those at any cost?
Correct. If they were at our schools, yes, we would provide all special education and everything else through the general fund, yes, because like we do with our special education teachers, we provide services to our students, but it's not Medicaid.
So if they came back to us, we would have to provide the same level of services in EIP?
Whatever the IEP says, yes.
So, thank you.
Mr. Rivera, can I, can I say something about that, please, about the IEP? Just one more thing. I do have to...
Let me invite you. Would you please give us a clarification? Go ahead. Go ahead.
All right. Let's speak to the IEPs that our children have. We, we are dealing with this right now, and I think it's something that you as school board members need, need to really understand what's going on within the school system. Our children leave Emerge with an IEP that states specifically what their needs are. We speak to our parents once they leave, and we think in their, their transition, this is what they're receiving. Once they, they go to a school within EBR, the IEP has changed, not for the betterment of the child. What happens is, it fits the needs of the school. That's not what we want for our children. Now, what I'm doing is educating my parents because I have to close the school. I'm going to make sure that our parents, these children, receive everything that they are entitled to through that IEP. So guys, be prepared. You will be paying a lot more, because the parents have to agree that you cannot change an IEP just because a school cannot provide the services. And so, it's very important that everyone understands that, but that is happening now within the school system.
Thank you.
And that's something that needs to stop.
Mr. Tatman?
Sir?
Oh, I'm sorry, are you still, I'm sorry.
Were y'all going to accept that as a friendly, or? Yeah, my mic is on. Were y'all going to accept that as a friendly, or?
Didn't, yes.
Oh, okay. I would, I would like to amend the motion for the contract, to approve the contract to include services reimbursable by Medicaid and Medicare, Medicaid, including speech, OT, and PT. So only services that are billable that we were... So, only services that are billable, that we will reimburse those?
You know, I'm thinking that it, right now, we can't quantify what that's going to be. After a year, we may have a better idea of how much that would be, and we may consider that at that time. But I would prefer not to put that clarification at this time.
Okay, then I would make that as a substitute motion.
Would you please state your substitute motion?
Motion to approve the contract, to amend the contract to include, sorry, motion to amend the contract to include services only reimbursable by Medicaid, including speech, OT, and PT.
So, that is the motion. Do we have a second? Second it by Ms. Collins.
And then I wanted to ask Ms. Lopez to clarify for me, can we quantify these things at this time?
No, it's very delicate, ma'am, but I can do my very, very best when I get back to the office.
But do we have, oh, you do have the information?
Well, I can, I can talk to EIS Med Claims and see if they can tell me the exact amount, because we run our claims through them every month. As the, for example, when the Emerge Center sends me a bill, before I set it up for payment, I send it to EIS Med Claims to start the process. But what I can do is I can tell you how much they claim per month, and I can give you 65% of it, so I can give you a good ballpark. But I would need EIS Med Claims to tell me exactly how much we get back from each one of those, because they make the claims for me.
I would be good with a ballpark, actually, right now. Mr. Blue, would that satisfy your concerns?
May I ask a question before we get into that? Right now, the only information we get from Emerge is what they're actually giving to us to bill. So, you're not even seeing the total piece of the information if they were being able to get these additional services, because you're not even seeing those bills today, correct?
No. What I get is for their occupational therapist and their speech therapist right now.
Correct, okay. I just wanted to make that clear. I'm sorry, Mr. Blue? She was asking you a question.
And I think, I think that clarification kind of answered it.
Well, at point of order, you've already made a second. You've already made, you've already made a substitute motion with a second. So, it's on the table.
Okay, thank you.
So, we're now on the substitute motion. Are you done, Ms. Bernard? Okay. Ms. Jackson?
Thank you, President Gode. The speaker mentioned the high-cost services, and in reading some of the backup I was looking at, I had a question about how often we file, and it was my understanding that we take, like, 12 to 18 months to request reimbursement for high-cost services. And what I would like, I would like to see this school continue, and I would also like to see that our department that handles special needs students would, there's got to be a way that we can file this a little more often, so that we can get, and also get the maximum. From what I understand, we're not, we're not getting the maximum that we can, and I would like to see us look at that and really take some measures to change that, so that we can get the maximum benefit, not just for this special set of children at this school, but all of our special needs kids throughout the district. So, I support the original motion and would like to see us move in a direction of getting the maximum that we possibly can and not waiting longer to request these reimbursements. And if it's a, if it's a matter of staff, I would like us to really take a look at that department and see what we can do to get the hands-on that we actually need, or I understand that Emerge had offered sharing some of that, some staff or some time that would help to do that. So, I would just like us to explore every option available to keep this school open and to change some practices that we have within our system, so that we can get the maximum amount and serve our children better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Ms. Dyson?
I believe that you might have missed someone before. Ms. Jackson, is that, is it my turn?
I had Mr. Tatman. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you had spoken. I'm sorry. My mistake. I'm sorry.
Usually, when I speak, no one notices.
My apologies.
No worries.
Unintentional.
No, no, no problem. Thank you, Mr. President. First, I just wanted to speak to the families who came and spoke. I can't imagine what you go through on a daily basis and the challenges that you have and your voice is not heard. God bless you. And, you know, it's, it's just an incredible challenge, and I know, I know that everyone on this board, regardless of how they vote, understand, maybe don't understand, because we don't live it every day, but are sensitive to what you go through, and I just wanted to say God bless you. I, I was president when we put the contract together, and at that time, we discussed with the leaders of Emerge that we thought that the model wasn't sustainable over time. I do plan to support the underlying motion to fund Emerge one more year, so that we can try to see if we can get the model right. Not so certain I would do that next year, but I am, I am, I was the second on the motion, so obviously, I'm supportive of it. One of the big challenges, and Ms. Ware Jackson spoke to it, was the delay in reimbursement. But as I appreciate it, it's not necessarily just the application. It takes the federal government, and Ms. Lopez may want to speak to it. It takes them sometimes two or three years to pay us. So, that's the larger issue, as opposed to when it's, yeah, depending on who you talk to, it's either two or three years. So, there is a lea time. When we negotiated the contract, we accepted that and said, okay, we can, I hate to use the term, but basically float it, right? Because clearly, they are serving a population that is very, very difficult to serve. Both, you know, these children have tremendous challenges, and so do their families. The other part of it is, is that if we don't, and the concern I have, Ms. Bernard, with your, I understand what you're trying to do, and I appreciate and admire it, I'm concerned that if we don't know what that number is, if we don't know what that figure is, we could be essentially closing the school, because the number's too low, and I don't want to do that. And that's, that's the only reason I don't support that part of, you know, your substitute. It's only, I like the idea of thinking through it and trying to figure out where we can get right on it, but I have a concern, and I don't want to see the school closed. But I do want to challenge the school, the parents and everyone involved, to take a look at this model, and I don't think it's the higher care, the more critical care that's going to be the money. I don't know if it's going to be outside fundraising. I don't know what it's going to be. I don't have an answer. I come from a fundraising background, so my sense is, is you set up a development department, and you go out and raise money, because if these parents went and told that story about what they go through on a daily basis broadly, I think you could raise a whole lot of money. But I do, I am concerned about your model. I'm going to support the underlying motion, but I don't know that I would support it again next year. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, and I'm sorry about overlooking you.
It's okay.
Ms. Dyson?
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you. So, I have concerns about the length of time for that as well, because I was hopeful that we could get to some agreement on a pay-as-reimbursed basis, but something would have to be done. Now, it's my understanding for Medicaid, that the dollars that we file with the state, and that these diagnoses usually help the family, the child, receive Medicaid reimbursement on, be Medicaid-eligible. So, are we filing with both, Ms. Lopez? Are we filing with both state Medicaid and federal reimbursement? Because that's what I'm hearing tonight, is federal.
It runs through the state, but it's federal dollars. So, what we do is yearly, for our employees, we have to do the cost services report, which has to run through DHH, which has to run through postal weight in Netterville, and Mr. Tatman's right, we wait a long time for our money. For our contractors, we have a contract with EIS Med Claims. So, like I was saying, when I receive a bill from the Emerge Center, before I even set it up for payment, I am sending it to EIS Med Claims for them to start processing it, and then we get paid on a month-to-month basis for our contracts like that.
When did that start? Because I thought you explained it the last meeting.
We just, like I said, we just started that. This, EIS is new, and they've been a great help, and I've actually sent them an email. They haven't had, they're still figuring out how to research to break out exactly how much we get specifically from those billables. But for the rest, the cost therapy through our employees, yes, that is only on once a year. In fact, we just turned it in last month. It's every November. But we are processing it, but we only get 65%, and that's only for OT, speech, and physical therapy if we have those contracts.
Meaning, not the ABA services?
No.
Why?
No, because it's very, very expensive.
Right. So, so, since the committee of the whole, we have actually put in place the step of the monthly.
Running it monthly, yes.
EIS Med Claims.
And they're great.
Okay.
So, we are, we are receiving it, not for our employees, just for contract.
Okay.
Our employees is still yearly.
So, that is, I think, going to be a big help with this. And so, I was hopeful that some discussions during these two weeks may have taken place, so that we could get to the point where we might could have some of that kind of stuff worked through, have, has any change, and I know we're, we don't have full, but I think they're on the call or watching. Do, have discussions taken place over this two-week period that have changed the ask in any way?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
No?
No.
And so, has Emerge, in fact, as my colleague, Ms. Jackson, said, have they actually offered manpower for filing? Is that correct?
I was not made aware of this, no.
That is not correct.
May I speak to that?
The high-cost services piece was brought to Ms. Lopez's attention over a year ago by the former principal of the school, Mrs. Lee Bizzard. It was addressed. We also, we actually had a committee that pulled together, and we were told, we offered, and in fact, I do want to pull it together. I would rather pull it together and give it to EBR to submit, because I feel like there's an educational component that the team has to have, whereas my staff will be fully educated. We tell you, we drop bills monthly for PT, OT, and ABA services to Medicaid. You know, I watch the aging. From an operational standpoint, you would never not wait to drop bills so long. And so, I will make sure that the high-cost services was billed and billed correctly. And we will, we will do that as a service through our offices.
And so, is that acceptable to receive them in that way, Ms. Lopez?
So, high-cost services is a totally different piece. That is a separate thing through the Department of Ed. You have to hit $37,000. Their children don't hit $37,000. And that's from our special ed department. I actually called and contacted. It's $37,000. That's the state limit. That's what the Department of Ed tells us.
Minimum?
Minimum, correct. So, their children don't hit that level, so they're not eligible for high-cost services, because per state MFP, they're eligible for $14,000. And like I said, all of our children who receive high-cost, we receive high-cost services funding for are extreme medical cases. These are very medically fragile children.
So...
You have a shaking head in the background.
I do, because I've been speaking with people within past and present individuals with the Department of Education, and they backed a different response. So, I think probably a sit-down with appropriate individuals to help those who don't understand what we can provide for the children, not just for our children, but within EBR, is a conversation we have.
So, I would, I would love to see that happen, and, you know, with open minds and thinking out of the box and trying to be creative here. And I'm not sure where, what information, you know, got left or whatever, but I would think that a committee with some of our senior staff members and some of yours, and try to actually work in partnership and try to work through some of the possibilities of, you know, the dollars.
Sure, sure. I'd love to bring in some people from Special Education Department, because they are much better versed in this. I just, I just run the bill.
And, and maybe they aren't as versed in this particular, you know, we all can grow. And so, we all must grow in this situation. And from what I understand, this, if this is approved tonight, this is for, just to finish out this contract. And, you know, because I typically feel like you're in a contract, this is what you've agreed to do, and, but I certainly, I feel for all of the parents, all of the siblings, you know, all of the extended family that have these challenging issues, dealing with them every day and trying to do the best by each and every child. I feel that way about our children who aren't in a type I charter as well, that are under our care. And, and so, maybe we have a better way of doing some of our own billing as well. And, but I do know that there is an ABA problem typically with billing and reimbursement, so I'll be glad to hear as well what all transpires with this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Collins?
So, first, I just want to, you know, clarify that I'm sure none of my colleagues here tonight question how valuable Emerge is. In fact, again, not too often that I'm going to support a new charter. I supported Emerge. That being said, I still continue to have questions around the financial sustainability and the staffing sustainability, because EBR teachers complaining about not getting enough money, and when you say 25% less, you struggling to get some, and all our teachers, anybody who pursues a career, dealing with all of our different kinds of children every single day, they all love what they do, whether they at Emerge or somewhere else. I'm having additional questions around, help me understand, it's very fuzzy. It's getting more, it gets more and more fuzzy for me. I mean, help me understand the moving pieces with the billing, where we can come up with a concrete number for this contract, but then when we discuss other options, we can't come up with a number. I don't understand what I'm missing. And so, I'm not saying that to be funny. I just really don't understand what I'm missing.
Ms. Collins, would you let me try to answer that real quick?
Okay.
At your pleasure?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, that contract includes a cap.
Okay.
It is not a solid number. It is a cap.
Oh, okay.
And so, it would be, they would bill until they reach that number. If they don't reach that number, they don't, they only get what they bill for. If they reach that number, it cuts off at that cap.
Okay.
Okay, so I just wanted you to be clear about what was in the contract. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. It's real simple. There's real simple explanation. Now, my other question is, and I think it was mentioned in a previous meeting, but I need a refresher. What prevents Emerge from being his own Medicaid provider and billing?
Because we are the LEA.
And so the statute says only the LEA? Okay, all right. Okay, I wanted to make sure I remembered that correctly.
I'm sorry for answering your question.
No.
I thought it moved the discussion along.
As long as I get an answer, I don't care who answers it, so no worries. Again, I, I do actually continue to be supportive of Emerge. I'm not confused about the level of intervention. I need some clarity around a few things, but I get conceptually that you're saying that you provide a higher level of intervention to get those students in a more mainstreamed environment as possible at their school of choice. But again, I, I don't know if we truly helping y'all long-term by approving this. So thanks for answering my questions and giving me more clarity. Again, this is not a, a, a diss at Emerge, it's not a diss at helping autistic students. One of the reasons why I felt comfortable about supporting Emerge in the first place is that I personally received services from Emerge's previous namesake when I was in elementary school next door at UT. So as a community, longstanding community stakeholder, I feel like there's some trust there. And also, I'm personally impacted by family members and close friends whose children have autism. And my sister's godson, whom she raised for seven years, got services from Emerge Center. So I'm a friend of Emerge, but I'm, I'm struggling with how this has played out and the different information that I'm getting along the way. So again, I'm not trying to, me asking questions and me being cautious is not dissing Emerge or dismissing the experiences of the families who have testified. I know personally, families, excuse me, my own family have similar testimony, okay? And so I get it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have to admit, I have gotten lost in the request to speak. So Ms. Bernard?
I would like to withdraw my substitute motion if the second is agreeable.
That's fine.
The substitute motion, the second agrees, so the substitute motion is withdrawn.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the board? I guess I would just like to make one comment. I've been listening to all of the discussion go back and forth, and a couple of observations. One is I truly, as Mr. Tappman and the rest of the board said, my heart goes out to the parents whose children are at Emerge. I know it is a very difficult thing to raise a child with autism. I have a niece who is very handicapped, and I also have very close friends who have children. So I have a firsthand knowledge, firsthand view, not a firsthand knowledge, but a firsthand view of what it looks like to do that. Secondly, I think, you know, one of the things I think we need to understand is this is a first-of-a-kind school, both in EBR and in the state, and maybe they didn't get everything right the first day. And I also think that our district is learning a lot about this. We've already changed how we're doing Medicare and billing and things like that. So I think our district also has a lot to learn. So I applaud Ms. Dyson and others for talking about making sure we get together and work through this because I think another year could help a lot if we really put our heads together. And, and my last comment before we'll close and go off to the vote, you know, we passed a lot of discussion around this table, has been around the concept of equity. And I heard one person give a definition of equity is that is supplying the resources to the kids that they need so they can reach the objectives they can achieve. And I think that is a very good definition of equity. And this is one of the very first times that we're coming up to have to make hard decisions on an equity basis. And I think equity, and you know, it's not fair for us to say, well, they need to get their billing done and give, that they get the money when we get reimbursed. When our, just because they're a charter, because our kids are getting exactly the same services, they get the physical therapy and occupational therapy they receive, those people get paid the same, or that month, and we don't get reimbursed forever. So why should we hold a charter school to a different standard just because their kids are in a charter as opposed to the public schools? So I think we need to be cognizant of that, and I really think this is an equity issue that we need to give these kids the resources that they need. And this is sort of our first chance to take out a step. And if you really believe in equity, and you really believe in equity funding, and you really believe that that's the way we want to go, that this is a first step because it is obvious these kids are receiving the services, it is obvious the kids need the services, it is obvious the parents greatly appreciate the services, and it is doing for the kids what they need, which is the definition of equity. So thank you very much. Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Shamling?
Yes, sir. I just want, I just want to clarify that the contract being approved tonight is actually for July of 2021. I wanted to make sure that was clear. I thought I heard a few board members say it was a continuation or would affect the current contract in place. This is for a contract beginning July 1, 2021 for a one-year term.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Collins?
I've stated before that I believe online comments ought to be read, and since I am reading one that was emailed, I would like to present it because it is from one of my constituents.
Sure.
Okay. The Emerge Center should not get this money because it is what was signed, it was signed up for. Did their business plan not include meeting the IEPs of all children? That is what all EBR teachers do every day with no additional pay. Also, there are reports of degree teachers only making $13 or $14 an hour, which should have been covered. What are they doing with their money? They have already told their teachers they will go private if they do not get their money. Again, I do not personally take issue with Emerge. I'm still hopeful that what motivated me to be supportive, in very rare instance, of any charter school, that I, that I can continue to feel comfortable. I have more questions that I will not waste time here with the meeting, but I did, I did want to go ahead and read that from my constituent.
Would you please read the name of that?
Oh, yes, into the record, yes, thank you, I'm sorry. Star Matthews, don't do the address, right, just the name?
Star Matthews is fine, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary? Who are you waiting on? Let's just do a quick roll call.
Mr. Blue?
Yes.
Mr. Lannis?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
No.
Ms. Collins?
Abstain.
Ms. Ware Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Dyson?
Yes.
Mr. Goddard?
Yes.
Ms. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Tappman?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Next on the item is consideration of a request for the approval to relocate EBR readiness campus from the old Banks Elementary School on 72nd Avenue to Glen Oaks Middle School. Is someone going to be here speaking for Mr. Nekease, or are we going to just go straight with the motion? Mr. Nekeas, you're on.
Hello, good evening. Again, we've looked at several options, and we have some information to present tonight as well, showing the campus in its current state. We also have options to consider to defer and look at some other sites as well. I think Mr. Munson is in the audience as well with the presentation.
I'm getting an IKEA sheet up of my list. Go ahead, Mr. Munson, thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm looking for our little presentation.
It's coming.
Okay, there we go, okay. Okay, I just need to make contact with everybody. Basically, I just wanted to, you can keep going. I wanted to just show a few of the pictures of the facilities that we are proposing. Again, they were the 100 building, which is a two-story building, the 300 building. Can you hold right there? Oh, back up just a little bit, I'm not ready for that. Back up a little bit more, I'm sorry. Okay, one more time, I'm sorry. Okay, here we are. Our request was for the use of Glen Oaks Middle School's two-story building, which we call 100 and 200, the 300 building that contains the library, the gymnasium, and the dining facility, only for the initial move-in for EBR readiness. Okay, keep going. This just shows just some of the numbers of enrollment normally and then what we have currently at EBR readiness, which we call Banks on 72nd. You can keep going. Some of the concerns with the facility are parking limitations, it's hard for me, roof and covered leak, roof leaks, mildew issues that we have there, HVAC issues, technology, and so on and so forth that the school is faced with right now. We're really proposing to move the students out of that facility as soon as possible. Keep going. Recently, we had an issue where one of the support beings for a canopy had collapsed, and due to having students in the building, I had to get it corrected. So the picture on the left is the before, picture on the right is it being corrected. So there are other issues that we've had there with roof leaks and so on and so forth, as some of the pictures may show. This is on the left, dining area, area on the right is the auditorium. And again, one of the issues that the students there are high-school-age kids, and they're in an elementary school setting. So we really wanted to move them into a facility that was more conducive to their age group. These are shots from the dining facility at, at Banks as well. Some of the covered walkways over there as well. You can keep going. Sorry about the delay on this. Okay, these are some of the shots from the Glen Oaks Middle School. And I'm going to just go through the pictures so we can keep going. I just want to kind of just give some highlights. Stop right there for me. That's good, right there. Again, the, the request was primarily for HVAC needs at the site, painting, general maintenance, IT issues as well, and that was the request for the funding, okay? The push just recently, I guess this past week, was just to make it conducive for a walkthrough for the various board members to come by and just try to see the, the potential in the building. And that's what was done in this past week. You can keep going. That's actually one of the areas that we conduct voting in right now. You can keep going. So these are all, and it says it on the left there, that's the two, that's upstairs in the corridors of upstairs. That's the library in the 300 building. Also, historically, I think in the second tax plan, there was approximately $1.2 million that was spent in this facility. During that time, the district only performed a percentage of tax plan activities in the buildings. They didn't do what's done now where they do the entire building. So back then, they did, just didn't do the whole, there was something fairly new, and they didn't want to spend all the money in one area, so they did a percentage in each school, and that's evident here. The entire building did not receive tax plan funding. So you can see the library ceiling's been replaced, air conditioning dedicated, lights, you can keep going. Storefront walls in the hallways, that's the dining facility that's connected with the gymnasium. You can keep going. There's the gymnasium, had an upgrade in seats, keep going. That's just a locker room off from the gym. This picture is just a view of the old auditorium that probably hasn't been used since the late '90s. And the actual auditorium stage area is probably even longer than that. But it, it had succumbed to a lot of vandalism over the years, and so we just recently removed at least 80% of all the stored computers and furniture that was left in that area. This is just a view of the seating area in that same auditorium. This is a view between the 7th and 800 wings, if you would. These are two wings that were not intended for use in the initial request, but we just started to clean them up just enough for a general walkthrough, just to see the potential and to see what upgrades had been made in those areas as well. This is just another area that, that, in the 700 building, that did get mold in it, and we've recently cleaned that area. This is a science lab building that used to be at one time a, excuse me, a welding shop, and this converted to a science lab building. So you can keep going. Again, it's just, just, again, another classroom, if you can see there, the tax plan renovated the windows, lights, it's a typical classroom package and still has some furniture left in it from previous charter schools. Okay. So I appreciate your time. I just wanted to be able to at least give an idea of the changes if you haven't had time to actually visit the site, and if there are any other questions, I'd be glad to entertain them.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Munson? Mr. Lannis, would you like to speak?
Yes, sir, thank you.
I'm trying to see, yes, would you like to speak now? Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you, President Goddard, I have quite a few questions.
We do not have a motion yet, so...
I'm sorry, that's true.
So moved. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Blue. Now, Mr. Lannis, thank you.
Yes, thank you, President Goddard. I have quite a few questions, if you don't mind, so just, just bear with me, Mr. Munson. Prior to December 3rd, how much money was dedicated to this school to go into this facility?
Could you repeat it one more time?
I said, prior to December 3rd, how much money was dedicated to this particular facility for any upgrades or renovations?
So I just want to make sure I'm clear, I understand your question. So you're saying since I started renovating the building just this past week, or prior to that? Prior to me just working at the school this past week?
Okay, let me rephrase, maybe that'll help. Prior to last, our last committee to hold school board meeting on December 4th, before that, how much money was dedicated and how much money went into this particular campus to do any outside renovations, maintenance, whatever it may be, how much money was dedicated to this? How much money was dedicated to this campus solely?
I don't have a report of that. I know from time to time, when the charter schools needed assistance, we would have either air-marked staff or someone would go over to assist them with some small-scale, short-duration projects.
Okay. Now, I will say, it's hard for me to believe because I actually worked at this school when those schools were there, and it was very hard to get anything done. In fact, we had to call out the RSD superintendent to try to help us negotiate, how do we go about receiving money to fix the school? How much money was dedicated between December 4th and December 17th? So that starting from the last board meeting up until today, how much money has gone into this school for maintenance, outside and inside?
Approximately $50,000.
$50,000.
So that was approximately $25,000 for the arbers to do the work on all of the overgrown hedges and trees around the campus and about $25,000 inside the building.
Okay. So my next question is, why wasn't that money dedicated to the school before the last school board meeting?
Well, I can say that probably in the last six months to a year, I've been authorized to start spending funds in our RSDs. So I've worked with Lanier, Prescott, Kennelworth. I hadn't had to do a lot at Dalton, but I've responded several times. So I've been working in those facilities. And so just with that, this is just an example, the only really push was primarily for the board members to be able to get an idea of what the potential was in this building to start using it. Opposed to what was going around the district as far as demolishing the building, I just didn't want the building to be considered to be demolished. I wanted the building to be restored and have its best chance to be restored.
My question, I'll just go back to the question. Why wait until after December 4th? If the building had been sitting there all that time, nothing had went into the building, no rehab at all? I mean, before any work took place at this building, the trees were everywhere. The buildings had mold, as you said earlier, all around it, not only inside of it. So again, that question is, why wasn't it done before then?
Okay. What really happened was the idea that at one time, idea charter was being discussed about taking over the Banks site. So I needed to help find a home because no one had started to look for a site for EBR readiness school to move into. We just lost the use of going to North Banks on Cadillac Street, so I needed to find a place that was large enough. And so those buildings that I requested would have been large enough for that low school to go into. And so that happened back this summer. So I've been working with Bernhardt, who was our HVAC provider, and going through, and I had been working in that building since Celerity, if that's still their name, when they moved out, I started to work on the HVAC fan motors and a number of other things. And so the only push, the only real push that I've had was the idea that we had voting in the building and I had to also make sure it was conducive for voting every time there was a session. So money has gone in, and I can show the amount of money, but I can't right now, that I've spent working with the HVAC provider, because the first thing that I needed to do as a priority is to ensure that heating and cooling would be supportive in those facilities.
So tonight, I really want us to really think about a decision that we're gonna make. And I want us to think about this based on not only where we're gonna relocate EBR readiness, but also what are we gonna do about repurposing and renovating all of our alternative school sites? While this is a very important item, it is much larger than simply moving one school because we have to change the way that we handle and maintain all of our sites. Because what is happening is we are perpetuating a school-to-prison pipeline cycle. Whether people want to believe that or not, because we have the most at-risk students attending this school. And the schools that they should be going to should look nothing like the ones where they're attending. And that's every single school. You can name Greenville, you can name Northdale, you can name Banks Elementary. Why is it that it's always our alternative school students that are attending facilities that look like those? And I'm not coming down on you, I just want, I want that to be understood. That is just a general question. Why is it that it's always those students that attend the worst type of facilities inside of our entire system when they are the most at-risk that we deal with? But just to give you more context, I want to read something from the Facility Summary Assessment from 2019, and this was from CSRS. Due to the magnitude of repairs needed to make this school interior and exterior optimal for long-term use, when compared to the age and condition of the school facility, we do not recommend proceeding with any long-term capital investments at this site. This is from our project managers, who handle all of our school facilities. It went on to say, the school needs maintenance attention as regards all interior finishes, ceiling systems, floor tiles, et cetera, cleaning out existing gutters and downspouts, repair of deficient items as a result of not running the AC system in the buildings, AC requirement repairs and replacement, repair of sidewalk covers throughout the school, repair of sidewalks and paving issues, repair of, replacement of building envelope components, repair and replacement of plumbing components, repair of underground site drainage, repair of and replacement of items required for ADA and life safety code requirements, repair and replacement of fire alarm devices and existing power and data infrastructure. Have any of those things been corrected or fixed off that list? Have all of those things been corrected and fixed off the list is a better question?
Well, the immediate answer is no, but those are maintenance items. Those are things that we have to do at all of our facilities. Even our newest facilities have to undergo those items routinely. And so that is the plan, to render those services at that site and all of our sites.
Okay.
I would like to also provide a report that I have been providing on all the RSDs that we have and the efforts to support them as well, and the activities that we've done along with any other report that would be requested.
Okay. Are you aware that according to the school's work code summary, beginning July 1st, 2017, until December 12th, 11th, 2020, the school has been tested for asbestos 17 times?
That's necessary. All of our schools, that's probably my strongest suit, all of our schools, every six months are supposed to go through a six-month surveillance to ensure that those asbestos building materials are in good condition or those buildings that have assumed asbestos-containing building materials. Every three years, our facilities are supposed to be, receive a reinspection. I actually performed inspections and wrote management plans for asbestos in my prior. So I'm very familiar, and that is to ensure the occupants' safety.
Okay. And this is my last thing. And I'm reading from Bulletin 741, Chapter 15 of Buildings or Plant Operations and Maintenance, Section 1501, Subsection D. School facilities and grounds should be kept attractive, functional, clean throughout regular preventative and corrective maintenance.
Yes, sir. Currently, I would like to say that we have employed RCI, who now takes care of all of our grounds and athletic fields. I have hired a local grounds company, who even at Glen Oaks Middle School, has done a pretty good job considering. I want to improve it. I think some of the community that's seen the changes in five days can get an idea of what I want to do for that facility and all of our facilities. I take a lot of pride in that. And so, you know, I don't know else how to respond to that, but that's something that is dear to me, and that's why I work so diligently at that site.
And I have no problems with that, Mr. Munson. As I said before, this is not to come down on you, but this is to raise a bigger point, is that, again, we have to do a much better job with the way that we handle the buildings that our most vulnerable students are inside of, because we have to send a message to them also. But not only that, we have to think about, what about the taxpayers that pay money and to making sure that those buildings are clean? What about all of those peoples whose property values went down because that particular site just was not clean, and it wasn't clean for a very long time?
Yes, sir. That's the reason why I took it upon myself personally to see to it that now that we have complete, and that was the other piece, the whole piece of coming here was to get your support in moving forward with taking back ownership of that facility. And I wanted to really thank especially all the contractors that came and worked with me and supported me that week, and I look forward to moving forward, continuing that.
Yes, sir. And I will say that my hat goes off to you for the work that you have put inside of the school. And while I can appreciate everything that you have done, my vote is still gonna remain the same. I do not think that this school is conducive for any child to go inside of because no child should have to be surrounded around blight while they're inside of our school buildings. I do think that we have more sufficient options that we can explore, that will put not only those children or those students in a better condition, but also those staff at that school. So I'll just say thank you, and again, I commend you for your work.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Smith would like to speak. Mr. Smith?
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, President Gode. And I just want to commend the board with this conversation around alternative students and thank the board for taking the opportunity to visit this site. As it stands, you know, talking with staff, we're not at a point where at the start of the semester to move EBR readiness out of Banks into Glen Oaks. So what I'm asking staff, tasking staff to do is to find a location that's feasible, that we can move our teachers. Currently, there's about 40 students, I think you might have saw in the presentation, that maybe 10 to 12 kids may attend. I think we have some options on the table to where we can get the faculty out of EBR readiness. There's still some IT, special systems, things that need to occur. And so what I would like to do is come back with more of a comprehensive plan around our facilities, because at the end of the day, I've talked with Mr. Lannister, and I do believe that Glen Oaks Middle is an important facility in our portfolio. Whether it becomes a one-stop shop for alternative education with some additional investments or if it becomes screen space, we have to seriously look at with the upcoming of tax plan projects in Phase 4, not have an adequate screen space for some of our schools. And so I want to commend Larry for the work that he's done within the week, because he's done a yelma's job with getting that facility ready for voting and for the tours. I think many of you guys have seen the opportunity and the potential of the site. I've talked probably to each and every one of you guys and even the conversation with Mr. Lannister. He was open to seeing Glen Oaks Middle be used at some point with some additional investments in the site. But I think that we can find some permanent solutions around alternative education, especially with the secondary students. But I just think, I think we need to allow us an opportunity to kind of dig a little deeper because, you know, whether we end up consolidating some sites, we have capacity in some of our schools, existing schools, we can consolidate. And so, but at this point, in my meeting with staff this afternoon, we would not be able to move the students or the faculty in Glen Oaks at the start of this second semester.
So to be clear, Mr. Smith, are you asking us to withdraw the motion?
At least...
Does the motion just move from Banks?
Yes. And I don't know that I'm not...
Well, Ms. Collins, if you will give the floor to Ms. Collins. Ms. Collins, you were next on the list.
Yeah. I would just like to offer a substitute. The building is 70-some-odd years old, and I appreciate, as others have stated, the work that Mr. Munson has put into making the facility presentable. I think it's important to point out that we just got this building back under our reign as a district from the RSD this summer. And there are some responsibilities when it comes to facility that falls on charters and falls on the district because it's still our building, but it's not 100% on the district. And I think that is something that we can't overlook in this conversation because this conversation involves the reputation of the district, and it would not be fair to the district to take full blame for the condition of that site. Because legally, we don't have 100% responsibility for everything involving facilities for any RSD school. That being said, that building is 70-some-odd years old, and the difference between a Glen Oaks Middle being 70-some-odd years old and then an alternative school in my district, Northdale, is that it has been under our, that's our school, and we have done the regular repairs and maintenance. I visit Northdale frequently, never been in the condition of Banks or Glen Oaks Middle. And in terms of long-term, what does that mean for a building that's 70-something years old, that has not been receiving proper care for at least a decade or more, then I think it has more significant long-term implications. And for that reason, I feel more comfortable supporting EBR readiness getting out of that nasty Banks building now. But then I prefer to see EBR readiness in a better long-term solution than Glen Oaks Middle. And I've had discussion, and there are some very strong possibilities that I feel, I know that the EBR readiness faculty and staff will feel better about once we solidify them. And so if my colleagues don't mind, I would like to offer a substitute motion for EBR readiness to move off of the Banks campus and operate a satellite office to be determined by staff for the spring semester of this school year, because as been mentioned, the Banks facility is entirely too filthy, for lack of a better description, and that Glen Oaks Middle site is not ready, but they need to get out of that Banks building. And the rest of my motion is that staff will also prepare another option for, additional options for permanent location for the 2021, 2022 school year. So that is clear, and I'll repeat what I'm offering. That is clear to the Banks, excuse me, to the EBR readiness family that we're getting them out of those nasty conditions right now. The students, the number of students attending the campus right now in this COVID environment is small enough that a satellite option is feasible for next semester. And then the language of the motion also allows that they have a better permanent solution by the coming school year, not, oh, we gonna figure out a better permanent solution eventually, and then four years later, you know, oh, we stuck here. So I'll repeat the language to make sure that I'm being clear in what I'm presenting. The substitute motion is for EBR readiness to move off the Banks campus and operate a satellite office to be determined by staff for the spring semester of the school year, while staff prepares additional options for a permanent location for the 2021 through 2022 school year. Can I get a second?
Second.
So the motion is by Ms. Collins, second by Ms. Menard. Discussion on the substitute motion. Discussion on the substitute motion. Let's see, I have up on the list, Ms. Bernard, you were next.
Thank you. I was going to ask Mr. Munson what the date was when Glen Oaks was returned to the district.
It was this past summer. The charter finally moved into North Banks, and I had been working with the manager during that time. Took him a while to get all of their things out, all the items that they had paid for, they took, kind of took with them. So it was this past summer.
Thank you. And about the asbestos, are there special certifications that are required to do that?
Yes. The person that performs the assessment is an asbestos inspector.
Okay.
Then it'll go to an asbestos management planner. And then every one of our sites has an asbestos inspection book and an asbestos management plan. New facilities have to have a certificate stating that asbestos products were not used in them.
Okay. And do you hold these certifications?
I have a contractor's certification through DEQ, I do.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you for explaining that to me.
No problem.
I didn't know all of that. So it's kind of routine that there's an asbestos inspection? That's just something we do routinely?
Certainly.
It doesn't mean that there's a problem?
Right.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
No problem.
Mr. Lannister, you were next up in the queue.
Yes, again, I just wanted to commend you for the work that you have done, Mr. Munson. And I'm not saying that we cannot use this site, just so that's understood. But as I've said to you several times, I mean, you spoke one-on-one, and as I said with Superintendent Adam Smith, who just said it himself, I'm in full agreement if we can put some capital improvements on this one particular site.
Right.
And that we come up with a comprehensive plan for how we do those same improvements at every single alternative school site. And if that is the commitment from not only our board, but from our entire system, I think this is something that we can use, because I am of the understanding that as the tax plan rolls out, we're going to need swing space for several of our schools. And this is another question I would have for you. If we could do this for Glen Oaks Middle School, is it possible that after we get those students out of Banks Elementary, we can do some things over there before we just absolutely say, let's tear these schools down? Because clearly, it was put up six months ago that we tear these schools down, and you found some viability out of this school. So in your opinion, as a professional, if you look at the Banks Elementary School site, is there room to improve this school in the same sense of what we're talking about with Glen Oaks Middle School?
I would first say yes, only if the roof had been replaced. The roof system at that school is what we call tar and gravel. That's the original roof system. It is failing in not a localized manner, but evenly distributed. That means that there are leaks over the covered walkways, there's leaks in the classrooms, and all those things impact the health and safety of our occupants and visitors. So the answer ultimately would be no.
Are there any other sites that are in the same level of condition as this that could be saved? I know we talked about, what was it, Eden Park?
Eden Park has a tar and gravel roof system as well. There are about maybe three sites that we have. The Keel Building, Eden Park, and Banks. I don't think we have any others, to my knowledge, that have that original roof when it was constructed like that. You have to tear that off and start over. And so with the age and deterioration of the building, another building that's close to that is Greenville. But so, I know that, I don't want to drag it on, but the answer to Banks would be no. And I would love to talk with you about any other facility that has great potential like that. But definitely not Banks.
Thank you. And I just want to say thank you to Superintendent Adam Smith for having those diligent conversations. And I also wanted to thank Board Member David Tadman for coming out and having some conversations as well as regards how do we move forward with a lot of our facilities and how do we come up with some comprehensive plans moving forward? So I just wanted to thank all of you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Dyson.
So I really liked Mr. Smith's idea of, and he, and it's been done quite often where a superintendent will just decide to pull something off of an agenda because more work needs to happen around it and then bring it back to us maybe in January. I'm a little bit unsure. I believe that would be very advantageous.
Certainly.
I'm a little bit unsure with the substitute motion talking about a satellite location that's going to be identified and readied or whatever within four weeks with a lot of holidays in there. So I don't know if a potential satellite, I don't know what satellite, that's not what I take as a satellite, but I guess it means a temporary location for the existing students and teachers just until the following school year, when they move to a more permanent location? Please clarify, because I'm confused on that.
When I, as I have been having discussion over the past several days, the language satellite was suggested to give flexibility to how they move forward for this one semester. Not, because I was like, well, can't they just do virtual 100% or something with that small number? And that language may have been too restrictive in terms of options for next semester. And so that's why the terminology of satellite location, because sometimes those students do need to come in person, even though the nature of the school is not one that they come every single day to the campus, especially in a COVID environment. But that's the reason why I use the term satellite.
I was just trying to get some clarity on that, because I didn't understand. Because I managed a satellite practice for years, and it was an ongoing thing. It wasn't temporary. It was just another location other than the main location. And so I was like, so satellite confused me. But, so you really mean temporary until we find a more permanent.
Instead of using the word satellite?
Yeah.
That's fine. I'll be honest, I didn't necessarily, you know, temporary is less rigid and still meets the purpose, and it's not confusing.
So I was just trying to understand a little bit better.
Okay.
On that. And I don't know, you know, is a few weeks going to give us enough time to locate a temporary? I know we have a lot of capacity in other schools, but I don't know if this population is going to be good to mix with or if we've got some other thoughts on that where adults are in a building and aren't filling it. And I understand that Mr. Niekase may have some additional insights that he would like to share. Are you on, Mr. Niekase?
Yes, ma'am. One of the options we have, and while we continue to explore more space, is that we can do a satellite area in a part of a school or another location. And again, just kind of like what was mentioned, we can have a space where we could still have students, some students come at certain times. We do have a lot of students who are still being virtual only, even within the alternative school. So with those small numbers, we could still have a place where students could come and continue to get one-on-one help if they need it. We could rotate teachers in and out of there in a spaced-out place, but at the same time, you know, allow other teachers to work from home until we get that final solution of a site chosen and picked.
So I know this is a challenging population, and I know that sometimes some students learn best in person. So do you have a, or does the team have a few options as far as where this temporary site would be?
Yes, those are areas, we're considering a few different areas. Some may be within the school itself, you know, and really collapsing down to the most usable spaces at Banks only. And then we're also looking at some of the other sites. We have administrative spaces, things like that as well.
Okay. And so you think that this is a doable solution to get those students out at the current site on Banks? And is that something that you support, you're supporting?
Yes. And this suggestion also was brought up by Ms. Tamara Johnson, who's on the call as well. And her team reviewing this is an option as well. So it was recommended to us, and we can support that again until we can come back and bring a more permanent solution forward.
Okay. Thank you for all that clarity, I really appreciate it.
And so, can my second agree to amend the substitute motion for that to be temporary instead of satellite location? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Ms. Ware Jackson.
Thank you, President Goday. I would support the substitute motion now that, you know, I realize that we can't do everything that we need to do in order to make the school ready, student ready by the first of the year. I did spend a significant amount of time at Glen Oaks Middle on Friday, and I was really, really impressed with the condition of the classrooms that you were asking to use and the campus itself with the wide-open spaces and the oak trees and the football field and all that area where, you know, it's just begging for kids to be. The biggest area of concern I saw was the walkways, you know, that needed scraping and some kilts and some nice fresh silver paint so that it would match the other walkways and so that when kids are there, you know, they're looking at when they're walking from class to class, that it's not an eyesore with those overhead drain pipes. And I know, thank you so much, Mr. Munson, for spending that amount of time with me and really walking through that, so we could envision some wonderful things that could happen on that campus. I'm so looking forward to the date when we all get together and we look at all of our properties and so that we can really see what we have. But at this school, there was this wonderful science lab, you know, with four science labs in there and a closet full of microscopes. A science program there, whether we put, no matter what type of student population we place there, would really benefit from a program like that. But the facility is just ready for children to enjoy and explore science. But if we were to add the population that we were originally speaking of, I would really, really want to see some wraparound services and programs for social and emotional learning and really good, keeping our really good teachers there who have a heart for those children and care deeply for them. So I would really like for us to revisit Proposition Two and make some revisions that would be necessary to effectively serve this very fragile but really strong-willed population of students and help put a stop to that school-to-prison pipeline. Those kids really, really need, they really need, they need people to love them. You know, they need to know that we care about them. And they need to be in an environment that is just as good or, in my opinion, even better than what we provide for our kids that don't need that much attention. So I'm hoping that we will add some training, like beyond high school, so that they'll be looking forward to some kind of job readiness, at least a two-year program. We've just got to think a whole lot differently to provide what these students really, really need. So I am so excited about board members being willing to look at a comprehensive plan, not just for this school, but for our entire district, so that we know what we have at hand. Because look at this property, you know. I know someone spoke about letting it go or tearing it down. And, you know, I think if that, if that happened, like I told Mr. Smith, I'd be the first one to go lay down in front of a bulldozer after looking at that property, because it is truly a diamond in the rough. And it's not that rough either, you know. So I appreciate your time, Mr. Munson, and hopefully we'll be able to get this facility up to par. It's not going to take that much, you know. Like you said, it's just the, like, intercom systems and safety items and things of that nature. So I'm looking forward to it, and I really want to see the day very soon we have students in there enjoying everything that the school campus has to provide.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tatman.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I will be brief, I promise. I wanted to thank Mr. Lannister for inviting me out to Glen Oaks Middle to take a look at the school. And I wasn't able to see the, I was there early, you know. But obviously, I've seen the pictures. What an incredible piece of property. I mean, it is a beautiful piece of property, the oak trees, the wide-open spaces. And for the parts that were renovated, they look really, really good. And I just want to offer my assistance in any way that I can to work to create a vision for that, whatever it is. And I've talked to Mr. Lannister about it, and whatever that vision is, I think this board is willing and ready to work with the board member from that district to help make some things happen. I wanted to point out, again, I'm going to be quick, because I know people are getting anxious. But I want to point out, when we, and those of you who are on the board will remember, Valley Park was awful. And we made a decision, it was our superintendent, but he made a decision to create swing space there, and we used it, I think, for two or three schools.
Yes, sir.
Of course, then Flame wanted it. And, you know, so you took a piece of property that was in disrepair that no one wanted to be at. We created some swing space for it, and then everybody wanted it, right? And so maybe there's a vision in there somewhere with that, but we need swing space. If you look at our tax plan, we have got to have some sort of significant swing space to make the plan work the way it's supposed to work. So I'm just saying, I love the campus. I hope there's something we can do with it. It goes to my last point, which is, boy, do we need a strategic plan.
Yes.
And that is something that I know we've moved on, and thank you, President Goday, for getting that process started. We need it sooner than later, and it needs to address all of the issues. In addition to facilities, what are we going to do with alternative education? How are we going to make it better? How are we going to better serve that population? So I just wanted to make those points specifically about the swing space in Valley Park. If we build it, they will come. And so thank you all for your work, thanks for the efforts on this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Bernard, would you like to speak?
I was going to ask Mr. Smith to talk to us about a master plan for construction and for buildings, to an assessment of all of the buildings and the condition of them. But I think the board has belabored that point in many other meetings, and so it's not necessary. I'm actually just going to call for the question. We've been on this item for 50 minutes.
We have to go to public comment.
Yeah, I know we have to go to public comment, but this is not debatable. So first, we have to go to public comment and about calling a question, so thank you.
There's no one else on the list, so let's move to the public comment. If you're here in the audience and would like to speak, please come up to the microphone and state your name. This is public comment on the substitute motion to move the EBR readiness to temporary facilities for the next semester while we research a permanent facility for the EBR readiness. Any public members who would like to speak? Ma'am, are you coming to speak on this?
Yes, I am.
Okay. facilities for the next semester while we research a permanent facility for the EBR readiness. Any public members who would like to speak? Ma'am, are you coming to speak on this?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Ms. Hannah.
Over here.
Hi, my name is Maria Harmon. I am with Step Up Louisiana, we're a grassroots organization. We mainly organize with parents in New Orleans and Baton Rouge. But I was just coming to speak, just to reflect on the occurrence that led us up to this point with Glen Oaks Middle's campus. What we've seen is just a result of privatization. EBR school district had little to no involvement because of the barrier set with the recovery school district. That being, what, a type-two charter school, I believe? So y'all had little to no governance over that school to begin with, but your children, our children in this school district still are housing that building. And it really gives me pause when, and I appreciate dangers for going through that school, because I'm thinking about the children that went to Bridge Academy that was there, the children that was at, they're under redesigned schools previously known as Celerity, and that's the same people that was running failing schools, charter schools in this school district, but they rebranded themselves, changed the name, and are back operating in this parish. So this just, is just really concerning to see what happens when things just completely lose out of the control of the local school district and what loss of real community control does. Because this is a trajectory, well, retrospective, you know, a timeline of our children being exposed in that building. And it, it really makes me think about how the process goes in New Orleans, because when all the schools came back under OPSB, it was a lot of back and forth between them and RSD. They had a lot of control over the capital of those buildings, and it's the same situation here. So I completely understood what Ms. Collins said, and I just came just to give a little bit more clarity by what that means when we lose local control of our schools. And I'm, I'm, I'm really glad that we are going in a different direction, because I don't think any child should be there right now at all. But I just really think it's unfortunate as overall that we don't have equitable buildings to educate our children. You know, all of that means something, all of that. And I agree, we're pumping our kids into the prison system because we're putting them in environments where they don't feel valuable, and it has to change. So I really hope there's some true solutions that can come out of this in the long term because we can't afford displacing our children from building to building. They need continuity. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next.
This is my child that attends EBR school system that is non-verbal with autism amongst other disabilities. And I noticed that we approved a charter for $425,000 that we shouldn't have. My child was in therapy, so we were late. That pains me, because now we're talking about an alternative school, about an alternative school building, but yet we approved a segregated contract for a segregated school. The school did not have anything that was diverse nor inclusive. IDEA was not waived. IDEA was not waived. That school was nothing short of a civil rights violation. My child and I were assaulted by that CEO at the, at the committee of the whole.
Ma'am, this is a comment on Glen Oaks.
I'm talking about the alternative school.
Okay.
My child and I were assaulted at this committee of the whole meeting by the, by the CEO of Emerge, Deanna Willoughby, and my child started having maladaptive behaviors at his school after that. Those maladaptive behaviors can cause him to end up being put in an alternative school, an alternative school that is not in any type of way, any condition, that is conducive environment for learning. Why do we continue to come up with insane things and think that it's realistic and that think that it should be okay? These insane decisions that we make, lithium does not treat, electroshock therapy does not treat. What will treat them is common sense. You have plenty of parents like myself that are dedicated and committed to helping this school system propel forward in the correct direction. Our children do not have to go into an alternative school if they are provided love and true education. We have dedicated staff that have given themselves day in and day out like my child's teacher, but yet we don't appreciate them. The $425,000 you gave to Emerge, you could have gave a raise to our staff. The four, the $425,000 you gave to Emerge, you could have used that to fix the building. The $425,000 you gave to Emerge, you could have provided a lot of things that our children need to have a better education and a better future. If our children's future really matter and if we are building a future if Baton Rouge, then that mean we would stop giving the money to people that really and truly don't care about the children. Why is it that we have to have something that is segregated to actually give some, do something that's correct?
Thank you, ma'am. Next, would anyone else from the audience like to speak? Seeing none, we will come back to the board, and if anyone wishes to speak, we will first have the call to question. If no one wishes to speak, we will go straight to the vote. Seeing no requests to speak, Madam Secretary, the, the motion for everyone's remembrance is to provide temporary space for the EBR readiness, I'm not going to say the exact words, temporary space for EBR readiness while the staff, for, for the next semester, while the staff works through better long-term solutions. I hope I paraphrased that close enough. For, for next school year, yes. Thank you. Madam Secretary.
Wait, hold on, I forgot the 2022. The motion carries.
Thank you. Next is the Inspire Charter Academy School Contract: Consideration of Request for Renewal of the Contract with Inspire Charter Academy. Ms. Okonske. May I have a motion? So moved by Mr. Tatman, seconded by Mr. Baloo.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we bring before you a consideration of a renewal request for Inspire Charter School. From the accountability perspective, your backup documentation has not changed. Just to remind you that, and by January 31st of the ending term of, of a charter school's term, a decision has to be rendered by its authorizing board. So we, we're due a decision on this matter by January 31st of 2021. Inspire Charter School was previously a D, they have risen to a C. Per our local charter policy, that criteria was met for a three-year term renewal. I, that, that's the information that I have for you, unless you have any questions. Ms. Silas is here, who conducted the annual review under her supervision. The principal from Inspire Charter is also with us tonight with her team to answer any questions. And I know Mr. Shamlin is on the line, should you have any contractual questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Mr. Howard.
Yeah, just, thank you. I can't hear myself. Yeah, just want to reiterate to our board that we, we did pass the policy reflective of what's happening with this particular school. If there's any revisions that we as a board need to make to the policy, that is a process that we need to take, and we are open to it. I think the committee who worked on it is open to it. Just, just to put that out there, that we can amend the policies as we see fit, if we see changes exist. But this is the first opportunity that we had to enact the policy and utilize it to provide this particular renewal. I think the process went well, I think we had a very robust process as a beginning, but if there are things that need to be changed, we need to look at our policy and not have to do it on a case-by-case basis, but look at overall changes that we can make to the policy. So we fix problems and, and provide solutions through policy as a policymaking body, so I just want to encourage us to continue to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Seeing no other board members wishing to speak, we now will take comments from the audience. If anyone in the audience would like to speak, please come up the microphone now.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Your policy says that initial approval of a charter does not give a school an unlimited life. Your policy also states that if a charter school achieves a C, that you are, that the superintendent shall recommend renewal. It also says the board may renew the contract. The board may also decide, and this is not in the policy, but this is me talking, the board may decide there are better ways for you to spend your money. I could imagine lots of better ways, like alternative education, wraparound services to make sure you take proper care of autistic children, not just the ones at Emerge, but everywhere else. I, I would hope that if you continue to bring Ms. McMurray up several times, you recall that, number one, she does not represent the charter board, she represents the H, the CMO that they contract with, and I would respectfully request a chance to rebut anything that she says. Furthermore, your agenda item says Inspire Charter Academy School Contract Renewal, you can't renew a contract that doesn't exist. Furthermore, because the contract doesn't exist, I think it would be a horrible policy for you to even be considering this for adoption tonight. I think they have exactly between now and the committee of the whole to negotiate a contract that they can present to you for the renewal period that is almost over, and only if they present a contract that they are ready to sign, that has been approved by their board, that you can consider. Would it be prudent, reasonable, and appropriate for you to even entertain the possibility that you might give them another three years to bide at the public treasury? This is a lot of money. You, you considered very carefully whether you could afford a few hundred thousand dollars for Emerge. Two weeks ago, you decided you couldn't afford half a million dollars to expand the campus at university terrace, and yet you're ready to all just say yes and move on to the superintendent's search and spend mil, commit millions of dollars for another several years to a charter school that does not warrant renewal. And with any luck, it'll come to a vote when two more board members have left the room, and it won't pass. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to make a personal point here. Mr. Finney bought, brought up a very good catch. Mr. Shamlin, the motion as written is probably incorrect because we are not voting to renew the contract, we are voting to renew the term of the charter school. And I do not know what the appropriate words are for that. Ms. Okonske, can you help us there? And I will say, Mr. Finney, we do have a signed contract in hand that will be brought at the next meeting, and I requested it not be on the agenda tonight because I wanted to go through the committee of the whole, so I would have a chance for view of the public. So in the, in the objective of keeping full public input on the contract, we are not presenting it tonight, but we do have a signed contract that we have not signed yet, but they have signed. Ms. Okonske.
Mr. Goday, you, you are correct in that tonight's decision is about the term. I'll have to defer to Mr. Shamlin, I believe he's on the line, about the legal language, but tonight it's just the option to go ahead and renew the charter.
To renew the charter?
To renew the charter.
Okay.
And I'll let him speak to the contract, Mr. Shamlin, are you there?
Well, we can just say renewal of the charter instead of renewal of the contract?
It's renewing the charter tonight.
Mr. Shamlin, is that okay with you, sir?
Yes, I agree. And to, to clarify for the board, and I believe the board have all received a signed copy of the contract for Inspire, going forward, that contract and several others will be presented to the board for approval in January.
And I assume, Mr. Tatman and Mr. Baloo, you will accept that as a friendly amendment? Thank you, sir. Okay, next, from public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Shamlin, for the clarification. I think that it's a shame that we actually mislead the public and make them think that some of these schools are actually doing something that they're supposed to do, and they're not. Some of these charters, like Emerge Charter and Inspire, do not have the federally required plans such as the American Disabilities Act. That's a problem when you have children like mine that actually attend these schools, receive the money, don't, don't provide them with the education, and then send them right back into EBR school system where we have to educate them without the funding. That's disheartening. Mr. Mike Goday is president of this school board. I think that it would be extremely prudent of you to actually tell this school board to not approve any more charters, not to renew a contract, not to renew anything dealing with them, and to, and to actually get our money back from Emerge, because they don't have any of the federally required policies as it relates to any child that have a disability. That should give you pause, because that means that each and every single last one of you are liable, liable for children like mine, who is actually reaching for this microphone that wished that he had the actual verbiage to say, to let you know how he feel to not be able to go to any of those schools if he wanted to, to have the freedom of choice to be educated and cannot be educated properly. But EBR, traditional public schools, is educating him, the school that's under, that's in Mr. Lannis' school district, Northeast Elementary. That's a school that every school in this entire school system should actually try to model. That's, the principal name is Dr. Janice Scholes, the assistant principal is Ms. Chanel Fernandez. Those, that staff, they're care. They care about the children, they love them wholeheartedly, and they do their job according to federal and state law. That is what we should be required to do, that is what we should do, and we're not doing it. None of these charters are doing it, and it's very sad. And it's sad that we actually have private conversations going on, Ms. Dyson and Mr. Tatman, where you don't have the time and energy right now.
About this issue, and I'm not going to let you.
Yeah, I'm talking about this issue. I should be able to call out the name of anybody that's being disrespectful when I'm actually talking, because I actually give y'all the same, I give y'all that much.
Ma'am, would you cut the microphone, please? Thank you. Next.
If you just pursue litigation, is that what you would like to do for violating open meeting law around the board?
Yes, ma'am, we do have a, we do have a court, we do have a, ma'am, we do have a, we do have a policy, we do have a policy on public courtesy, and you have violated the policy on public courtesy. Thank you, ma'am. Next. Thank you, ma'am. Next.
Well, hello, I'm Kimberly Boujo, and I am the principal of Inspire Charter Academy. I would like to thank all of you for your partnership, it's been great working with you and making Inspire part of the EBR charter system, and we're making sure that we're able to connect with you. Thank you tonight for considering our renewal, we've worked very hard. I know that we do have a very low seed, it is my intentions to continue to grow the school and show that we're able to service all students and all families in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other public comment? Seeing none, back to the board. Ms. Collins, uh, Ms. Collins isn't here. Back to the board, I see no further comment from the board. Madam Secretary, we still have a quorum. I can't hear you, I'm sorry. You will, thank you so much.
The motion carries.
The motion carries. Next, we will move to the consent agenda, and it will be read by Mr. Howard. Vice President Howard.
Consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless a board member so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as an item on the regular agenda for the and considered as an item on the regular agenda for the separate vote preceding the last item on the regular agenda. Two, grant, consideration of a request for the approval of the first T of East Spanish Parish Grant in the amount of $24,500 to provide seven elementary schools with training, equipment, and lesson plans. Consideration of a request for the approval of a professional services contract between the East Spanish Parish School Board and the following: Halton, Milford, Harcourt, in the amount of $28,000 to provide professional development, funding source, driving readers, comprehensive literacy; Great Minds PVC, in the amount of $26,875 to provide professional development, funding source, redesign; Quality Matters, in the amount of $60,200 to provide professional service development and support; Funding Source, CARES Act Strong Start; Bond Resolution, consideration of a request authorizing the issuance and sale by the East Spanish Parish School Board, State of Louisiana, of its not exceeding $35 million revenue anticipation note, providing for the terms and payment therefore, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. Number five, water, policy water access. Consideration of a request to adopt the following policies: fecal water bottle filling stations, G A, G A, M A, G A, J A, excuse me, water bottle staff, and J C D A G, water bottle students, and to provide for related matters. Construction of Baffert Magnet Middle School, Magnet School Building Edition. Consideration of a request for the authorization of staff to advertise, accept the low bids meeting specifications, and make the war for a contract for construction of the Baffert Monastery Magnet School Classroom Edition, or reject any bids and all bids for just cause in accordance with the Louisiana Public Bid Law, Louisiana Revised Statute Title 38, Chapter 10, Funding Source Phase Four Tax Plan Proposition One. Demolition of University Terrace Elementary. Consideration of a request for the authorization for the staff to advertise, accept the low bids meeting specifications, and make the war for contract demolition of University Terrace Elementary School as specified in the Plan to Improve Facilities Technology, Discipline, and Compensation in the East Spanish Parish School System. The plan is revised through February 22nd, 2018, or reject any and all bids for just cause in accordance with the Louisiana Public Bid Law, Louisiana Revised Statute Title 38, Chapter 10. And last, consideration of a request for the approval of the recommendations from Gwen Shamblin, General Counsel, for the East Spanish Parish School Board, and the matter of Warren Flores versus Nalia Bowler, the East Spanish Parish School Board in Berkeley Insurance Company, suit number 669492, Section Division 22, 19JDC, Parish of East Spanish Parish, and to provide for related matters, related matters, I so move.
Moved by Mr. Howard, do I have a second? By Mr. Lannis. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Are there any items that any board member would like to pull? Seeing none, is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we will move to the audience. Anyone from the audience would like to comment on the consent agenda?
Thank you. I have two comments, and I'll be brief. With respect to the Baffert addition, it seems like poor planning to put an addition for middle school one mile away from a middle school that isn't full. And with respect to the demolition of University Terrace Elementary, there was much hand-wringing two weeks ago about not save, not spending the extra money to buy the vacant land between the existing campus and the rec facility on the other side of Alaska Street. Yet you have on the agenda item tearing down a building that was brand new, I don't remember how few years ago, but that preschool quad is certainly less than 10 years old. And I'm not sure that it's the best stewardship of the resources you have at your disposal to be driving a bulldozer through that building, especially if you can't afford to expand the campus to fill the appropriate space. So I know you'll vote unanimously in favor of them all, but I feel better having had you listen to those few minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience?
The old folks say, "A hit dog will holler." So I heard the dog holler a few minutes ago. Well, on our consent agenda, we have water access. That's a problem. But we giving away money to all these charters, and now we got to talk about water access. You don't see a problem with one of the essential things that's needed according to Maslow's hierarchy of needs having to be put as a consent agenda item? Demolition of buildings. It's a lot of buildings that should have been demolished a long time ago, that should have been rebuilt from the ground up. But that's a reflection of the former school board mem, uh, former school superintendent that we had, that we continued to give raises to, that did not deserve it because it was not providing an equitable building and equitable resources to all of the children. Litigation. We continue to have litigation because we continue to fail to follow the law. For some unapparent reason, we don't see, we don't tend to know the law and know exactly what it says. But we have three JDs, we're about to be three, JDs as school board members. And we have a general counsel that we pay a six-figure salary. And yet, we can't get it right. We continue to have multiple litigations. That's where our money going. Failed charters and litigation. Maybe if we give a lot of the parents like me who take time out of their busy schedule in life to bring their child day in and day out to the committee of the whole meeting and to the school board meetings to actually give you their opinion and actually let their voice be heard. Maybe if I stop and I just continue to pursue litigation like everybody else, just maybe, just maybe, you would get it right. It should not have to take that. When a child, my child, had to witness his mama being assaulted again, again, at a school board meeting. We don't know how to live according to our vision and our mission? We don't know how to act, how to live according to the strategic plan that is right behind you? That's a problem. So, Mr. Goday, as president of the school board, I encourage strongly and urge you to please have a very nice meeting with all of your school board members to give parents and all of the people in the public that actually come up here and speak, that give their tax dollars to this school system, the respect that they deserve. The respect that they give you. Because I give you that same respect when I get away from the mic. And I want nothing short of that. That's a problem. The problem is not the parents. The parent is not the kids. The parent is the, is the leadership that we don't have. Our school board is.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Are there any other comments on the consent agenda? Seeing none, any comments from the, questions from the audience? Uh, I pulled my sheet down, I'm sorry. Ms. Ware Jackson.
Thank you, President Goday. I just wanted to extend my appreciation for Baffert Monastery being able to move forward. The Montessori program is, is one that is in high demand. And I appreciate the ability for our elementary school kids to continue in Montessori through middle school. It's, it's too bad they can't go beyond that, but that's another, that's a, that's a whole nother issue. But I know that parents are very excited about their children being able to stay in Montessori through middle school. My only other comment is, and I, I just want to make this about the University Terrace. I'm hoping that we can figure out a way to work on those properties and that we were looking at before. My only concern is, is around traffic. And just not holding up traffic, you know? That's the concern is about our College Drive and Acadian thruway with, with our magnets there and the carpool lines. I would not like to see something like that happen at University Terrace. So I'm hoping that our, our staff and the construction crew will keep that in mind and figure out a way to do something with the properties that are, are fronting one of those streets. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments or from the board on the consent agenda? Seeing none, Madam Secretary?
Please vote. The motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Next item on the agenda is selection of superintendent applicants. Discussion and consideration of selection of applicants for interviews for the position of superintendent of schools. And I will read into the motion, I will make the motion for the nomination process. I move that the candidate nominations to receive interviews for the superintendent of schools proceed as follows. Supposed to be, I move the selection of the candidates to proceed as follows. Each board member will nominate up to four, repeat, four names on the ballot provided by the board secretary. The board president or the board member, if he would so choose, will read the nominations into the record. The board secretary will tally the votes and announce the results. From these results, a second ballot will be prepared with the names of all candidates receiving a minimum of four votes in the previous vote. Each board member will then nominate up to three names on the ballot provided by the board secretary. I repeat, up to three names on the second ballot. And I will read this again before the actual votes. The board president or the board member will read the nominations into the record. The board secretary will tally the votes and announce the results. From these results, the board will invite all candidates receiving a minimum of five votes to participate in the finalist interviews in January. I so move. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Tatman. Thank you. Is, is there any discussion requested by any of the board members on, on this motion? Seeing none, we'll go to the audience. Does the audience, anyone from the audience with which to speak?
Good evening, everyone. Sierra Hart, Director of Organizing and Strategy for the South Louisiana Coalition for Education. A year ago, on this day, we were all together at Woodline High School doing this process again. And at that meeting, there was about 30 to 50 community members. And so my ask of the board is to really prioritize community involvement. We understand, one, that we are in a pandemic. But also, if pre-pandemic, we only had 30 to about 50 community members at a meeting post-pandemic or during the pandemic, the expectation is that the number will be less if there is not intentional innovative effort into organizing and galvanizing community members. And so although this process has been expedited and railroaded, we as the South Louisiana Coalition for Education, as teachers, community members, parents, and students would like if the board would prioritize community involvement by either having the finalists come in some virtual forum or the same way that we come here and it's streamed live, the same way that you had Dr. Towns and Dr. and Leslie Brown come, the finalists, be able to bring them here so that the community can actually engage and ask questions. That way, the community can be a part, as well as any innovative methods that you can think of. There is a whole communications department for EBR, utilize that. Employ your community members. You have methods where you can talk to teachers. All of those things are important, especially when we are trying to lead and figure out who is going to lead our district. We don't have time to silence the community in this process. The community needs to be a part of this process, even here now. Normally, this room will be packed. I think this is just an example of how disengaged people are. And as a board, you should want the community to be here. You should be disappointed that, that we aren't here. And yes, we are reaching holidays, which should make it even more of a priority that you get as much community involvement as possible despite the time restrictions and anything else that's in the way. It's your job to engage us. And so I ask that you do the job of those who elected you to serve in this position. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And I would just like to comment, we do value the public input. And we have not published exactly how we will go about doing that because we did not know how many nominees we will have. And the form that might take may differ depending on the number of nominees we have. But we do plan on having the ability for public input and public interaction with the candidates. Next.
Hi, my name is Maria Harmon. I'm one of the co-founders and co-directors with Step Up Louisiana. I'm just coming up here just to express the need again for community input and transparency. During the course of the last search, there were a lot of implications that occurred with just the business community's influence really rearing the agenda for privatization when we know the real community choice was someone that was local. Also, again, we have the rearing head of the business community again with that horrendous letter really trying to shame Adam Smith, which I really thought was not good at all, from Mike Leto and other people. And it's just, again, it's just pushing a certain agenda. We know these people are very influential. We know they have more money, more influence than many grassroots, community people, everyday people who have their children in these public schools. I just asked that this process is equitable. And equitable, I mean, meeting people where they're at, meeting people's needs. If we know that we need to engage with people where they're usually busy and not available after four, we need to think of some creative ways to meet and engage with parents. Some families are not going to be having easy access to internet and broadband. We need to think of some socially distanced ways to be able to engage people where they're fully aware of what's going on in real time. Again, I, my only fear is that this process again will maybe hijack by the business community, and that's the last thing we need. I'm just imploring everyone here, just be authentic as possible with integrity and just really being for your real constituents, the people that actually voted for you, not the people that paid for your campaigns. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. I'm Candace Damon. I'm also a representative from the South Louisiana Coalition for Education. And I wanted to return to one of the points made by one of my colleagues about community engagement. During the last superintendent search process, community members were able to connect with candidates via small forums hosted by board members and a public town hall where candidates answered questions submitted by community members. It is imperative that the board provide those spaces again, regardless of the number of semifinalists selected tonight. In addition, at the December 3rd board meeting, President Mike Goday stated that community organizations can reach out to candidates for engagement opportunities. Noting that the candidates will likely respond in accordance with recommendations from the board or the consulting firm, it's imperative to ensure both candidate participation and community participation that the board partners with interested organizations to plan and execute a public town hall. Perhaps that looks like several meetings with candidates on each interview day. Perhaps that looks like one major town hall, depending on the number of candidates. In-person interviews will take place in 21 days. Begin planning now. Connect with those organizations now. Engage the community now. These decisions must be made with, alongside your constituents. I also would like to take a moment to read an additional public comment submitted by another, our chair, Dominique Dallas, because we're not reading public comments allowed. To add to what my colleague previously stated, it is imperative that the board proceed with the superintendent's search process with transparency and community engagement. The fact remains that candidates were brought in last year in the midst of the pandemic, and EBR has the means to create opportunity for community members to be involved in the search. Put your personal agendas on the backseat and be proactive in relationship building with stakeholders by finally using this round of the superintendent's search as an opportunity to develop depth of relationships from an authentic community. We all want to be proud of the superintendent's decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name's Divine. I'm also a member of SLICE. I'm the board secretary. So, you know, something in common. I'm also a special educator, so that's even more important. So I just wanted to read that. You say you want more parental involvement and community involvement. You claim that it takes a village to raise, shape, and develop a student, yet you have presented Slim to no true avenue for the community to get their voices heard. Your role is to serve the community, not silence or diminish our input. Your educators have been instructed to teach and build competent. Your educators have been instructed to teach and build competent analytical thinkers who are bold advocates. As an educator, I am required to follow all expectations, including wearing a mask while teaching my third graders. If our youngest children can adhere to these dress codes, I am more than confident that you can as well. Wear your mask out of respect. This is not a do as I say, not as I do time. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next?
Good evening, everyone. Devin Wright, and I serve currently as a part of the South Louisiana Coalition for Education. You've heard so many of my colleagues and this really concerned educators, community members before. And they've all talked about making sure that there is community engagement in this process, right? But I want to speak a little bit more to what you've laid out in terms of how the voting is going to go. And I know that sometimes the board is not very as kind to us asking direct questions or wanting to answer those. But I am just kind of interested as to why there's only going to be, in this narrowing time, three finalists that are brought forward. In the last round, there were five that you all came through where we were able to hear full interviews from them. And so in this time, you're only limiting that to three. I would assume that the answer is going to be because of the timetable that we have, but that was a timetable that you all chose or agreed to based on the people that you have hired to do the firm. So that, to me, is a moot point. I believe that there needs to be more than three, at least in terms of maybe five like the last time, so that we can actually hear full interviews of the people because it's such a critical decision. And so if someone would perhaps make a friendly amendment to that motion so that there can be more people brought in, yes, we were able to see their resumes, yes, we heard those brief on-demand questions. Our organization, I personally, were glad to hear answers about equity and making sure that that's at the forefront. That's what we pushed for last time, made sure that equity was a part of that candidate profile. But I don't think it serves our community. It doesn't serve the more than forty-two thousand students, it doesn't serve over three thousand employees for us to limit just down to three and not have an opportunity to hear fuller, more. And the last thing that I would say, especially in a time like this, as a pastor in the community, this weekend, I'll be presiding over my sixth funeral as related to COVID-19. And I just think that it is deplorable that a decision has been made to stop reading public comments out loud and forcing people to perhaps put themselves in unhealthy situations or at risk to come and be a part of the process. Mr. Goday, that is your decision, that is on you, and I think that it should be reflected, that it is a poor decision, and it shows a lack of compassion and understanding and inclusivity. And I just needed to say that. Good evening.
Thank you, sir. And I do want to correct one mistake in that, a misunderstanding. There will be, each board member will vote for three candidates to come for in-person interviews. Mathematically, that means up to five candidates can be selected as the votes are split up. So there is a total possibility that we can have five if the support is there, because that's twenty-seven total votes, and five into twenty-seven is five plus a little bit more. So there's a total possibility to have five candidates, depending on the strength of the convictions of the different board members for the different candidates. I just wanted to correct that. We're not limited to three. Yes, ma'am?
The Bible says, "I look to the hills from which my health cometh from, and my health cometh from the Lord." According to the Bible, hell is a hot place. And right now, this school board meeting has been extremely hot. So I take it that hell is a lot hotter than this? And if so, I for sure don't want to be there. But what I do know is that this school board serves a population that is so socioeconomic disadvantaged. And yet, we have to think about how we're going to allow them to provide their input. The children and the families in which you're supposed to serve holistically. The children and the families whose minds you're supposed to feed. The children and the families who heart you are supposed to mold to have integrity, character, respect, compassion, accountability, responsibility. For some reason or another, we have had superintendents that did not mimic that. And it is a shame that we continue to get superintendents that seems to serve the business interests instead of the people who actually come day in and day out into your brick-and-mortar buildings. My child is one of the people that he just spoke of who is put in jeopardy right now being in this building because my child cannot wear a mask due to his health. That letter has been sent to the school system. Yet, we have school board members that think it's okay to violate open meeting law and Robert rules of order. I think you have litigation in regards to that. We should think about the future of EBR's school system, the future of the people that would actually take care of you, the future of the people that actually will make sure that your bank account actually have the money it's supposed to have. Stop thinking about the business entry. Lipsy and Polito don't care about you. They will leave you high and dry the moment that the needle is put in a different manner. Potassium is the lethal injection, and for some reason or another, that's what you continue to do to this school system, provide it with a lethal injection. We want a superintendent that actually care, care for our children, that actually knows that if he's a Judas, that he can go and do what he needs to do. We don't want a Judas. We want a Messiah. And the Messiah is not bought. A Messiah is resurrected. And what we are asking for right now is a resurrection, a resurrection into this school system. Because right now, we are critically suffering. We are suffering, and we are on a ventilator, and we do not need to have to give resuscitation.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any other public comments?
I have a question, which you may or may not wish to answer, and then a suggestion, and then a comment. The question is whether board members are allowed to nominate applicants from beyond the fourteen applicants that were proposed by the search firm.
If they would so choose, we would allow.
Okay. The suggestion is that the IT folks put a copy, a blank copy of the ballot up on the screen for a few moments, so we, we who have not looked at the whole list of fourteen or so applicants could quick jot down the names so we can try to match what we hear to the choices and keep score as this process goes along. And then my public comment is that you have several senior staff members who are not attending this meeting, presumably in some cases due to pandemic-related concerns. Yet you're not reading public comments. I don't think that's a wise trade-off. You are allowed to do beyond what the law requires you to do. We could disagree on whether you are legally required to read public comments aloud if you are meeting in person, even though your staff members aren't here physically present. But if you would like us to believe that you care for the public's engagement, you could give them the respect to read their public comments, at least with respect to this agenda item. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments?
Good evening. I'm Sajada. First, I would like to thank all of the board members for being here. And I'm speaking, I hope I don't sound too long-winded, but I just want to offer some grace to you all because we don't know what it's like to be, some of us don't know what it's like to be in a leadership position. Most of us don't know what it's like to be in your specific position. And I know that sometime, passion can come off as aggression, and delivery can change the message of things. But I really pray and hope that, as hard as it is, that we can look beyond how someone says something, or the timing of it, and we can look at the bigger picture. And I hope that that's unity, and I hope that it is doing whatever is best for the students. I don't doubt that anyone on this board doesn't have that interest. I think it'll be a little bit judgmental of me to make that assumption, despite the things that I see. But like I said before, everything's not what it seems. And I know a lot of times, I can speak on a lot of the things that audience members have spoken on, and I think that that's pretty understood, but it's not always understood that you guys hold a position where it's a lot on you. And just from my experience, from having a lot on me, it allows me to have some grace because it's one thing to say, hey, do this, you should be, and those words are so triggering because when you feel like you have this demand on you, it can almost make you feel like, well, I'm not going to do it at all. And it can kind of change your attitude and approach about it. But I do pray and hope that we can stay focused on the bigger picture, and that is unity. And whatever needs to happen to make sure that we can get the community involved and we can show the community that we do value. It's one thing to say those things, it's another thing to act in that. And I think some of those frustration comes from accountability, and accountability doesn't feel good, looking in the mirror and saying, I have to change this. It doesn't feel good, but it's necessary, and at the end, it's fruit always. So, I don't know. I think, I sound a little down, but I'm really hopeful that we can all just come together. You know, I come to these meetings, and I just see a lot of pointing the finger. Even as a first-year teacher, my first-year teaching, it was a lot of pointing the finger. And I'm just like, man, what would happen if we just hold each other's hand and just be intentional about like, you know, I'm going to forgive you for this, I'm going to look past this, and we're just going to stay on one track. So again, I just want to offer my grace to you guys. I want to thank you and just encourage you to look beyond the delivery and look at the hurt, you know, look at the passion.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the board? Mr. Lannis?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. And while I won't beat the issue any further, I will just amplify really quickly the importance of making sure that we prioritize public input throughout this process, just so we can have full accountability and transparency for our entire community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson, did I overlook you, or?
Ms. Collins.
That was from the other one, okay. Thank you. Yeah, but. Thank you. So just to reiterate for everyone one last time, so there's no misconceptions or no, where did Ms. Bernard go? Oh, she already gave me her vote. We're getting ready to vote. So each board member in this round will nominate up to four names. And the person, the person's receiving a minimum of four votes will move to the next round. So each board member gets four votes, and any person receiving four votes moves to the next round. Is that clear with everyone? Okay? So if you would please mark your ballots that have been given to you, paper ballots, and pass them, or if you would like to read your own, please signify, and I will let you read your own. And so we will go in district order, and I cannot read. Mr. Lannis, did you want to read your own, or did you pass it? So district order is Mr. Blue. Would you call the district order, please, so I don't mess it up?
District one, Mr. Blue.
For Mr. Blue, he has one vote for Mr. Smith, one vote for Jeremy Couvion, one vote for Marla Shepherd, and one vote for Dr. Narcisse.
District two, Mr. Lannis.
Adam Smith, Jeremy Couvion, Marla Shepherd, Tawana Grover.
District three, Mr. Howard.
Adam Smith, Jeremy Couvion, Marla Shepherd, and Dr. Tawana Grover.
And what?
Dr. Tawana Grover.
Grover, okay, thank you.
District four, Ms. Collins.
Adam Smith and Marla Shepherd.
District five, Ms. Ware Jackson.
Okay, Ms. Ware Jackson has one vote for Adam Smith, one vote for Marla Shepherd, one vote for Mr. Narcisse, and one vote for Ms. Grover. I'm sorry, these are all doctors, and I'm not saying doctor.
District six, Ms. Dyson.
Adam Smith, Dr. Narcisse, and Marla Shepherd.
District seven, Mr. Goday.
My votes are for Adam Smith, Marla Shepherd, Cito Narcisse, and Tawana Grover.
District eight, Ms. Bernard.
Ms. Bernard votes for Adam Smith, Jeremy Couvion, and Khalil Desaque.
District nine, Mr. Tatman.
I can't see. Did I? Let's see if I can figure out, is this your signature, Mr. Tatman?
Yes, it is, I'm sorry.
Mr. Tatman votes for one for Mr. Smith, one for Marla Shepherd, and one for Mr. Narcisse. Is that it?
Are you ready for me to call him out?
Yes, please.
Nine votes for Adam Smith, four votes for Jeremy Couvion, one vote for Khalil, I'm not going to butcher her last name.
Desaque.
Eight votes for Marla Shepherd, five votes for Cito Narcisse, and four votes for Tawana Grover.
So in that order, Mr. Smith, Ms. Smith, Dr. Grover, Mr. Couvion, Dr. Shepherd, and Dr. Narcisse move to the next round. Is there a concurrence? Okay. Are you going to pass out a new ballot with the? And what we're going to do this time is we're going to pass out the same ballot, but the semifinalists or whatever from the first round will be highlighted, so you only vote for the highlighted candidates. And the board members, yes, sir? I'm sorry, Mr. Howard?
Oh, I was just, so just offering a suggestion in the spirit of what the community just said. We just eliminated the candidates down to a certain number. I think it would be wise if we could invite the ones who were remaining to an interview so that the community, like they said, could get the input. I know we've already voted on the motion, but just offering up a potential suggestion to alleviate some of the concerns that we heard during our, during our last thing, I mean, because we could basically get to one candidate here, and there would be no opportunity for the communities to engage. So I just wanted to offer that up as a potential solution to alleviate the community concerns. So I just wanted to offer that up as a potential solution to alleviate the community concerns.
No, no, I got it. If that's a friendly suggestion, I do not accept it. I do not accept it, because mathematically, there's impossible that we're gonna come down to one. And so we will definitely have, and if people can't get up to four votes, five votes, that it takes. If you're not in the top five, if you're not in the top three of at least five members...
Well, that was my friendly suggestion, you denied it, thank you, we can continue.
I understand, thank you so much for your suggestion. And we may end up with five anyway. We're doing arts and crafts. We're not having another round of public comment. This is all one vote on the same motion. That is your option. I will say, Mr. Finney, if you'd like to come back into the room, I want to make sure that, that there is no taint on this vote. Even though I disagree, I will allow you to have a chance to do public comment.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and I believe there may be other folks that would like the opportunity to speak, if you're so inclined. I was just gonna say that even if you end up with only one finalist, I believe you're still obligated to have a, a public interview. So even if there is only one finalist, or what seems more likely, two or three, there will still be an opportunity to engage the public. And thank you for erring on the side of public transparency.
Thank you, Mr. Finney. Is there anyone else?
I just wanted to, thank you again for the time you just got here. I just wanted again to speak to this, so, Ms. Gode, I appreciate you for clarifying that before. I'm a math educator of 10 years, I understand the law of numbers and how they work. This is exactly what I was trying to get to right here. So, in this round, it is likely that you're going to limit even more, right, because of the numbers, who you're gonna bring to interview. My only request and suggestion is that you all consider bringing all five for interview so that we can see the best that is out there for our children, for our educators, janitors, parents, grandparents, guardians, principals, bus drivers. It makes sense to bring as many as possible, since you have a chance to redo what was done before and unfortunately could not bear any fruit. That, that's all I'm saying. It is likely that you're going to narrow down yet again in this round. And, to speak for clarity, in the last search, you did not do a double elimination in one night. You made sure that you brought after the first narrowing down, all those people for interview, and then your final two, you opened up for a town hall, which you still have not laid out a full plan for that happening, even though you've already got the interviews scheduled. You could have a date for a town hall scheduled. That's all I'm saying, all I'm asking. It makes sense, do it.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments?
Okay. One, we need a clock in here, because it makes no sense for us to have a meeting that lasts this long. Our committee at the whole meeting lasted until midnight. A little bit shy of that. The school board meeting, when it came to electing a superintendent, lasted a little bit past midnight. Here we are again, trying to decide on a school, on a superintendent. So, here's my suggestion, because we're gonna give public input, and being a parent of a child that's in our school system, and I, and y'all receive the most money for my child, let me give you some real input. The real input as follows. We have already narrowed it down to about five people. If we're going to eliminate any more people, just eliminate the ones that had the least amount of votes. The ones that had the least amount of votes should just go ahead and be eliminated, and then we keep the ones that had the top numbers. That is what's best for our school system if we're going to move forward. If we're going to move forward, we need to look like, we need to think about the children. Look at him. He's the only one that faithfully comes up in this building, and he has a disability. And if he can take our time out of his life and schedule from therapy, come directly after therapy, after surgeries, and doctor's appointments, I think that we should actually have a superintendent that actually is gonna give him the attention that children like him so richly desire and need. So, as each and every last one of you get to marking on your papers, which some of y'all are not paying me no attention right now, and you're marking on your papers, I think that we should think about that lack of respect. Whoa! And see, my child even saw the lack of respect, and that's why he's giving the maladaptive behavior. Because when you give lack of respect to parents, that's, that's another look at you and your maladaptive behavior. So give us a superintendent that actually is not gonna be reflective of that. Thank you.
Seeing no other public comments, we will come back to the board, if the board is Let's see. Mr. Lannis, you've already spoken, right, or is this a new one?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll just speak briefly, and I'll say that, and you think about the math, if there's a possibility that we can select five people based on the current formula, then I don't see any reason why we shouldn't invite all five candidates back anyway, if there's a possibility, because there won't be any adverse effect on the process. So, I am in full agreement that I think that we should bring all five candidates back, just want to let that be known.
Thank you, sir. Would you like to make a substitute motion, sir? Okay, thank you. Are there any, Mr. Howard?
Yes, so, since my friendly amendment was denied, I will make a substitute motion that we consider all five remaining candidates for an interview to be selected by EBR superintendent, if I can get a second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the substitute motion? Any public comment on the substitute motion? To invite the five candidates that we have now.
Just one question, and you can just think about it. Sometimes we fight against things, and sometimes I fight against things, I don't even know why I'm fighting against it, and sometimes I just have to ask myself, why not? You know, I could choose this battle, I could fight against five or three. It really is petty, it's really petty, it's so funny. But we could do five, if we can do three, why not five, you know? So, just think about that, I don't know who ultimately makes the decision, but why not five? More than that, this will be an action to show the public what you said, and that is, I value your words. So, that's it.
Point of order, please?
Yes, ma'am.
We have already adopted a process here.
That's right. We've already accepted a motion.
The motion, the substitute motion is not in order.
You're correct.
Because we already adopted a process.
You're correct.
I'm sorry.
The motion on the process had already been done, so the motion is out of order at this point. I am sorry, you have a very good point of order. I'm sorry, Mr. Finney, but since there is no motion, there's no public comment.
It's all good. Spirit of the board.
No, sir. So, the, where we are now is that we have the ballot in front of you, and each board member will vote for three candidates, up to three candidates. And, and any candidates receiving five or more votes will be brought in for in-person interviews. So please mark your ballots. And I might add, this voting process was passed out days ago.
Look, I printed it really neatly.
Thank you, sir. So if you pass your ballots up to me, please? Thank you. And I will be smart enough to put them in order this time. I would also like an extra form. No, that's fine. Ms. Ware Jackson and Ms. Collins? Ms. Ware Jackson, are you gonna read your own, or you want me to read it? Yeah, I can need it after you read it, if you want to read it.
Can I read it?
District one, Mr. Blue. Oh, sorry, Mr. Gode.
District one, Mr. Blue. Do I have yours, sir?
Yes.
Yes, I do. District one, Mr. Blue, has one vote for Jeremy Couvion, and one vote for Dr. Narcisse.
District two, Mr. Lannis.
Mr. Lannis would read his own.
Adam Smith, Jeremy Couvion, Marla Shepherd.
District three, Mr. Howard.
Adam Smith, Jeremy Couvion, Dr. Tawana Grover.
What was the last one, Grover?
Dr. Tawana Grover.
Thank you, sir. District four, Ms. Collins, has one vote for Adam Smith, and one vote for Marla Shepherd.
District five, Ms. Ware Jackson.
Adam Smith, Dr. Marla Shepherd, and Dr. Sito Narcisse.
District six, Ms. Dyson.
Ms. Dyson has one vote for Adam Smith, one vote for Marla Shepherd, and one vote for Sito Narcisse.
District seven, Mr. Gode.
I have, excuse me, one vote for Marla Shepherd, one vote for Sito Narcisse, and one vote for Tawana Grover.
District eight, Ms. Bernard.
Ms. Bernard has one vote for Adam Smith, one vote for Jeremy Couvion, and one vote for Marla Shepherd.
District nine, Mr. Tatman.
Mr. Tatman has one vote for Adam Smith, one vote for Marla Shepherd, and one vote
Seven, four, seven, five, two. All right, I have seven for Adam Smith, four for Jeremy Couvion, seven for Marla Shepherd, five for Sito Narcisse, and two for Tawana Grover.
Thank you, ma'am. So the candidates that will be invited for in-person interviews will be Adam Smith, Dr. Marla Shepherd, and Dr. Sito Narcisse. Is that concur, any board members concur on the vote? I lost my agenda. Ah, here it is. Next, we will move on to the discussion and consideration of a section of land that purchased in South Baton Rouge. Mr. Kurtz.
Thank you, Mr. Gode, thank you, board members. We have a package here, and in our last meeting, there was some discussion and question about the size of considering schools, and what size of land tracts were needed. So in our, where, oh, there we go. In our presentation, this is something, this first slide here is just to refresh everyone with the school attendance zones, and what I'm going to run through very quickly are sites to give you an idea of what existing schools are like. This is just a sampling. For instance, Scotlandville High School, which is a magnet, is 35 acres. Moving to the next, Tara is 26.8 acres. Liberty, formerly known as Lee, also represented herein as Lee, was approximately 26 acres. Woodlawn is 48.7 acres. Estruma, 29 acres. Lee, which we've already referenced, McKinley is 22 acres, that will change when Buchanan changes. Broadmoor is 32.4 acres. Bel Air, 27.5 acres. This will give you an idea of what existing schools are like, and if we allow something that provides us with 30 to 35, that should be adequate. The bigger question is going to be something that's a bit out of control, and that's how these design elements are featured on a site, and how we get to utilize low sites when we have them. The first site that we looked at before, just to give everybody an idea of dimension, it's 29 acres, and it's approximately 1,000 feet or more in width. Site B, which is one that we talked about before, is 58.18 acres. Following from there, we go to Site C, which this is one that we had comments on, but I wanted to show this to make sure we were correct from last time. The previous properties involved only one owner tract, it did not involve multiple owners. And in looking at this, the site has a yellow and a blue. The yellow site by itself is approximately 15 and a half acres, and the other site is 47.21. This would be larger than any other high school site we have, and it's unlikely that we may need both. However, there have been some questions about access. And in this particular site, in my last presentation, we talked about Perkins Road. And Perkins Road has been taken over by the city parish, there is a road transfer program. And in meeting with Fred Raifert, this is something that they would make consider, consideration on, how Perkins Road is designed, so that if and when a school were ever to be located, they would certainly work that in their design. It would be unlike what the state wanted to do, which is not as traffic and user-friendly for school buses or school traffic. Looking at this, so that we have an understanding of this particular property, the next slide is a zoning map to give you an idea of what is around it in terms of zoning. Right now, it has single-family residential on either side, it has, currently, the frontage of this property is zone commercial, there's single-family residential in concentration across the street, and it is near major retail areas. Now, looking at it on the following page, you'll be able to see where the floodplain is, and unfortunately, because we are late to the game in being able to... And unfortunately, because we are late to the game in being able to pick a site at this end of town, many of the sites on this end of town are going to have some of the site affected by floodplain. So, we'll have to do some work to be able to build within that site. In this particular site right here, the area that is closest to the railroad track, which if you look at the white boxes just above the floodplain, that is the retail area where Lowe's and Walmart and Sam's are located, known as the Seagan Marketplace. This area has a levee, which is the railroad track that runs along it. Some of the flooding that's there is backwater flooding from Ward's Creek. Ward's Creek is slated to be dredged by the Corps of Engineers. As for what will happen, this piece of property does have some area that is low. However, we do have the option of being able to use playfields and other things in some of the low areas. There are things that do not matter when they are a bit inundated. Out of this, if you look at our next slide, which kind of gives you an immediate view of what is around this, you can see that we're immediately abutted by a neighborhood on the left and there is an unnamed area just below that that is developed as a Brack Park, which is kind of in the corner of the L. From a view, this property right now is owned by one owner. It's currently improved with housing and stables and it meets our size requirement based on what we've seen before. Moving on to Site D. Site D is one that we discussed before and it too is owned by two different landowners. It has excellent access. However, between the two, we would need to take part or the rear of one or work with access. Right now, Wright's Avenue dead ends into this property and at the other end is Seagan, excuse me, is Rieger Road, which parallels the interstate. Both of these roads stop at the property line and for proper access, we'd have to do some roadwork. One of the things that we did not discuss in the previous meeting is that the building that fronts on Wright's Avenue is Federal Express. I don't know how that will affect, but in this particular property, excuse me, the site itself is all basically cleared and while it may show that it has floodplain, much of the site was filled when the interstate was improved. On the following page, we have a legend to give you a better idea of what we're dealing with, with the zoning immediately around it. There is actually immediately to the north, there is an apartment development and a park, which is currently undeveloped. And there are single-family retail to the west, however, it has no access to the site. Moving over to the floodplain on the next page, you will see that there is some floodplain that works through this property. However, some of this has already been filled to date, but is still noted as being in the floodplain. It would, it would need to be studied further to determine. In looking at these, to be able, if we can skip over to two slides, over to Option One, excuse me. I was trying to give you an idea on this track, what 35 acres would look like or could look like. One of the things that we've talked about in the past is having visibility for the school system. It may be that in a final school configuration, we don't have a perfect square. It may turn out that we could do something that has some frontage on the interstate and more frontage on the other side, just based on cost. Property that fronts directly on the interstate generally is much higher. Trying to figure out how this could be configured is going to take further study with a plan and with our program manager to get an idea of how the components could fit before we can actually negotiate between the two landowners exactly how it would be accessed and how this would be shaped. But this will give you an idea of Option One. And Option Two, again, we're dealing with two landowners. This is another idea whereby we would only purchase the rear area and take up about 35 acres. We may not need 35 acres. In a perfect world, you saw where some of our other school sites were pending the layout, we might be able to get by with 30 acres. But it all depends on our actual final layout. Now, one of the things that you will notice in this Option Two is an extension of Rieger Road and exactly where that would be, I'm not quite sure. But in order to have dual ingress and egress, this would be excellent for the site. If you look at this, the landowner has sold, when he sold the property for Federal Express, actually sold part of the lake as part of the retention area. That's something that's going to take some further evaluation due to the nature of how the school is going to be using the site, what we would really like to see on the property, and understanding that a lake is not necessarily something that's conducive to a school. It would be nice if we could have that off the site. So, that's something that we can look at. We've got different options that we've laid out. Dollars and cents wise are going to need to be further studied based on a location and further engineering. But there's still, once a site may be selected, there still has to be some decisions about how the site is configured, how it's accessed, and how it's going to be engineered to be able to get to the bottom line of that site selection. Are there any questions about the sites?
Ms. Bernard? What's up on the list?
Hi, I really just wanted to make the point that you, you're comparing it to some other sites and their acreage, but there's really only one land purchase that's in the tax plan for, and it's this year, 2019, 2020, which we've extended into a little, a little bit out. But it's, it's supposed to be a piece of land that is big enough for an elementary and a middle, because it's unlikely that there will be any land donated. These two sites, the design for the elementary is slated to begin in 2020, 2021, and that would be, I think, in the spring, early in the spring. And the construction would be in 2021, 2022. Then, the secondary school would begin in 2024, 2025 with design that year and then construction in 2025, 26. So, I just wanted to make that point. So, about when we're talking about configuring and buying a smaller acreage of these available lots, it's, it's likely, I'm suggesting, that we probably need to just go ahead and purchase as big a piece as will be suitable and available to us. So, that, that's all. I didn't really have any questions.
And it's been pointed out to me that we don't have a motion on the floor yet. So, Mr. Tatman, would you like to make a motion?
I would. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Kurtz, for the information. This is, two of those four pieces of property are in my district. I don't have schools in my district. You gotta, you gotta go a long way before you get to a high school. We've, we've made some adjustment that recently, but, so, there are two properties that I like, but I, I, I'm going to make a motion and I'm going to read it out. And so, Madam Secretary, I'm going to read this out. You're going to get it? Or you, okay. A move that we authorize Board President in consultation with our legal counsel and real estate consultant to negotiate and execute the purchase of the land as outlined in the current tax plan for the land purchase for the new school in the southern part of East Baton Rouge School District. By the way, that's quoted directly out of the, out of the plan. As identified by our local real estate consultant as Item D on the property near the intersection of Interstate Ten and Seagan Lane. I'm sure you got all of that right.
So, we have a motion. Ms. Dyson, second.
I have a point of clarification.
Okay.
The clarification is, did you say land purchase for new school or new schools? Because I'm reading on this piece of paper right here. It says schools.
Yeah, I took the, I'm, I'm open for a friendly amendment, but I took it off of this document, the tax plan document.
Okay, it says schools.
And I literally, yeah.
For both schools.
So, I quoted land purchase for new schools in southern part of the East Baton Rouge Parish School District, and that's why it was so wordy, but I pulled it right.
I just wanted to make sure that it says schools plural, because that's kind of important. Thank you, that's all.
Mr. Tatman?
I'm sorry.
Secretary? If you have it written, could you walk it over to her?
Yeah, it's, I would.
No, just give me the property again.
At, at the end of it, it basically, and you probably don't need to put this on here because it's already referred to as D, so you could probably take that off. But just for clarification, I said it the property near the intersection of Seagan Lane and the interstate.
And that's Seagan, that's Seagan Perkins and the interstate, that property.
No, it's the Seagan, it's the Seagan Interstate property.
Okay.
I think that's D, right?
Yes, it's D, okay.
Want to make sure I'm making the right motion?
That, that's, she has the copy of the map.
Yeah, and I, I think that it, I think that's a good piece of property for us for a variety of reasons. I, I like the idea of the interstate visibility. Even if we weren't directly on the interstate, you still get a good look at the school from the interstate. I think the land around it will be more valuable. It, it's already cleared and I like the floodplain a little bit better. I will admit, I was going back and forth on two properties. And we just need relief for, at Tara and at Woodlawn. And when you put up your first map, I think it showed those attendance lines that reach into an area where there are no schools and we need to, we need to get some schools there. So, that's, that's my motion and I'll, I'll just be quiet and let the conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Tatman. Mr. Howard?
I just, during your first presentation a while ago, when you went through these properties, you indicated which properties fell within the boundary lines of St. George. If you could do that same thing for us, or for me, for this property A, St. George, yes and no, property B, St. George, yes and no, property C, St. George, yes and no, property D, St. George, yes and no.
Right now, we don't, we don't have St. George yet. I don't know that St. George is our biggest issue, but our biggest issue is if we go, if we look at this property here, the property directly across the interstate, which is the Ashner Development, that is part of the city of Baton Rouge. We could always elect to go either way, whatever needed to happen with that school. If it becomes city of Baton Rouge and this, I have no idea what's going to happen in the future, it could be annexed into the city. The other tract that we looked at that was on Perkins Road, it is not inside the designated city of St. George.
Right, right. So, not, not to cut you off, I understand that there is no official St. George, but based off of the boundaries lines as written, as voted on by the constituents of St. George, if you can indicate for this board member, which, whether each property site identified falls within that boundary line, that would be great. Because you did it the first time, but it's not appearing on here. For me, I need to understand and know for clarity which one of these properties as written falls within the boundaries of St. George.
All right, if we go back and we look at it, we have, well, if we go backwards, we go from D. D is in what is currently the voting area of St. George. C was not in the voting area of St. George. B, I'm, I'm not sure. I don't think it is. It's at the end of Starling Lane. And A is not. It is on Nicholson Drive slash LA 30.
Thank you. Is that it, Mr. Bernard? Thank you. Mr. Lannis?
Yes, I just wanted to echo the message from Vice President Howard. If we are in any areas that are in St. George, I would like to see that we have that school property annexed to our city before I feel comfortable voting on it. I just wanted to say that for the record.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Seeing no further comments from the board, any comments from the public?
Yeah, I, I think I have the same inquiry about the, we, we know the, or should know, the history behind St. George. I mean, the, the reason behind this was education. So, if the site is Site D or any site chosen within those lines are, or site chosen are within the St. George lines, I mean, we, we know what comes next. So, let's just be honest. Let's just be honest to the public and everyone. Let's just be real, 100%. And, yeah, I think that, that is definitely a concern of, of the public if that is the case. I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Mr. Kurtz, you can sit if you'd like. You can sit if you'd like. You don't need to stand up during the public comments.
I'm okay, I've been sitting for a while.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would like to suggest that you consider authorizing the Board President, General Counsel, and Real Estate Advisor to negotiate with owners for both, both parts of C and whatever parts of D. Because if you lock into D, suddenly that land gets a lot more expensive and I happen to like C a lot better. You're not going to buy both, they're too close to each other. That would be my suggestion, to give them the option negotiating with the folks for C also. Come back and think about A or B later, but I would suggest for today, widening your horizons so you consider C also. I like the fact that it's surrounded by neighborhoods, not all that commercial and the industrial traffic. Yeah, I just don't see D as a place I'd want to send my kid to school. C seems nice and quiet and I think you'd, you know, I live in a floodplain and every now and then the creek moves into my house, so. You live in South Louisiana, you deal with it, and if you know what the flooding possibility is, you design the building around it. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next?
Hi, I'm just really concerned about the majority of the land that was presented is in a floodzone area. It looks like in the location is just unavoidable. That's just what it is. But I just encourage that if there's a plan for y'all to partner with city parish, merge resources, where we can think in a preventative way to just ensure, you know, continuity for our children to be educated, because when disasters come, it's not about a thing of if, but when. You know, we need to make sure we have some sense of continuity and think proactively in this situation. And also, I just encourage the board to just be intentional about locating a space that's not going to be in a controversial area like St. George. If it is, again, I applaud y'all for bringing that up tremendously dangerous, you know, annex it into the, into the parish, into the city. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'd like to thank Mr. Lannis and Vice President Howard for your questions and your, your statement. It was right on time and it was very befitting. Secondly, a lot of that property is, has ponds and lakes and waterfronts. Children with disabilities, which I'm sure will be attending, in, attending the school, whether it's an elementary, middle, or high school, are attracted to water. Guess y'all didn't know that. That's how a lot of children with autism die. They drown. So, I think that any property that is located close to a park should not be a consideration because a park is a public entity. We do have school board members that sit on Brack Park's board, so they know that that is a public entity. We cannot control that and that would allow public access to a building so that we can have an active shooter situation. We don't want that. I think about all the safety problems that we could possibly have. And we would know that if we have an American Disabilities Act plan, which I'm sure we do have, but we just need to review it to make sure that when we getting ready to purchase a, purchase a piece of property, that we make sure that is, that we will be able to do all evacuation policy, plans, as well as that we can make sure that we build something that is going to be in line with the American Disabilities Act. Last but not least, Mr. Tatman stated that it was a a high school. Ms. Bernard sta, stated elementary and middle, and I know that the agenda is reflective of what Ms. Bernard states. So I greatly appreciate if the board could make some clarification for that, on that issue for the public, because we cannot mislead the public before we make any type of decision, and I strongly encourage us to go with what Mr. Lannis stated, which is we do not approve anything until we actually know if we will be able to build a building that is conducive for all of our students, children with disabilities being at the forefront. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other public comments?
I asked something as a public comment. Uh, I, I would say that, uh, Mr. Finney, Finney has a very good suggestion.
Yes, but we will, we will nego, now, this is only giving the authorization to negotiate. It is not giving the authorization and we can, you know, to sign or doing, we can always walk.
Understand.
We can always walk, and they, we will make it certain that we can always walk.
I would like to make that clear, so that everyone knows this is not selected. It is authorization to proceed to.
Yes. That, that is correct. And I do not believe the motion states any sort of school. It just says the, the land. Is that correct?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Any, uh, let's see here. I've lost track of who's up here. Um, Mr. Lannis, I think you were next, because Mr. Howard had spoken. Ms. Collins?
Um, not just because Dr. Finney is also one of my constituents, uh, but it does sound, and, and I absolutely am wanting to be very respectful that this is, uh, uh, Mr. Tatman's district, but I would like to offer, uh, hopefully a friendly that we consider the C and D sites. The reason why, um, I think the motion would have more support and be less divisive, um, uh, and give us more options as a, as a board in our negotiating as well. Um, I, I do personally feel a little angst. I do appreciate that the, uh, property is adjacent, and so, um, to St. George, propose, to the proposed city of St. George, which could give us some options, uh, to, um, I'm at a loss for words, it's been said earlier, but, uh, to, thank you, ma'am. I was about to say amen, and I knew that wasn't right to annex. Um, and I mean, I would imagine it's in the best interest of the district that we would do so, um, but I'm struggling with only moving forward with Site D, um, you know, for a couple of reasons which have already been stated. Um, I think looking at both Sites C and D would, uh, help alleviate a little bit of heartburn and get more support from more board members. Um, or is that, that would be my hope.
So you, are you proposing a friendly amendment to add Site D, I, Site C?
Yes, because it's going to get nasty.
I'm, I'm not mad, yeah.
You know, I mean, I'm just, it's going to get nasty if we just.
May, may I make a comment? Um, one of the things I've done in my professional career is negotiate a lot of contracts. And just having, I, I can tell you that if you go in with D, and they know you, you're coming in with D, you have a lot of leverage, because they know if you walk, you've walked. And playing between two sides with all of the engineering work and all of the things that need to go into doing these things, that makes our costs double to be able to do it, because it's going to cost us something to negotiate this. And I don't, I don't feel that I would have my hands tied, I won't be president then, but I don't feel we would have our hands tied behind our back if we only have one site, because you can negotiate very hard when they know if you walk, you've gone, and you're not coming back. So I, having two sites, you know, it's not like buying a house. This is not, you're not dealing of this house or this house. There's a lot of time and effort that goes into evaluating a site and coming up with a price on it. And I don't, I don't feel we would be at a negotiation disadvantage if we go in only focusing on one site right now. That we can, you know, this is only an authorization. This is not a, not a thing saying we're going to buy, and there are state requirements about what we can pay for land. Uh, I don't know, Mr. Kurtz, how that works, but there are state requirements that we can't overpay for land or anything like that.
We can only pay what the appraised value. We're not, uh, we can't go into usurious mode.
So I, I think there's a lot of protections around that, and, you know, if they want higher than the appraised value, it's a no-go, and we go to the other site. But I, I just caution that going to two sites right now, it's kind of like having belts and suspenders, and it can end up delaying and costing, costing us money. That's just my opinion. We can do whatever.
My offer for a friendly is to address a couple of concerns, not just that particular one. Um, I, I mean, you know, I, you try, I, I'm trying not to, but with, with it being adjacent and potential for annexation, it's not the same thing as saying it's going to be annexed. Um, and then that's their whole, uh, and, and while my friendly doesn't eliminate that, it at least gets us past this point without, um, it blowing up in this moment. I mean, you know.
So not right now, but let's talk a little more, because I have some questions, if that's okay. Um, I mean, you can make it, you can make it a substitute if you prefer, but I.
Okay.
Uh, you know, I, I just want to, I have some more questions, yeah.
I mean, well, so I'll offer a substitute that the, uh, the property to be negotiated are both, uh, the properties to be negotiated are both C and D.
I would, I would suggest, um, using the language Mr. Tatman recommended, uh, used for his motion for the substitute, but, but, but substituting property C and D at the end of that language.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Just simply putting C and D at the end of what he previously, uh, the, the previous motion? That's, that's fine. Can I get a second? Okay.
So, uh, Mr. Tatman and Ms. Dyson, did you accept the friendly?
It's not friendly, it's a substitute.
Oh, it's a substitute motion, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I mean, it was friendly, but.
So Collins and Howard. So the substitute motion is on the floor. Any other comments or questions from the board? I don't have my list anymore. I need someone to help me. My computer died. Mr. Tatman?
Yep. Thank you, um, Mr. President, and, and Dawn, thank you. I, um, I will tell you that personally, I struggled with those two properties. Um, the other one is closer to my house, not that that means anything, but, um, I think they each have sort of pros and cons, and, and my, so I drive past that, I mean, that's where I live. I drive past there every day, and I used to play golf poorly on that little driving range that's part of the, the, um, C property, yeah. Um, and I've been there when it was flooded, you know, like where I was driving balls into the water on purpose. Usually it's by accident, but anyway. Um, and that, that was one of the issues. Now, I know Mr. Kurtz had said that, um, that they were going to dredge Wards Creek, but of course, if it's backwater, I, I'm not really sure, and so it, that draws some concerns, because even if they, hell, if they dredge it, you could have more backwater, depending on where the backup is. I, I don't know where that is, and just for the record, I used to, in my old house, I used to live on Wards Creek, and it comes up fast, and it comes up big. Never flooded out, became really close a few times. And so I worry about, um, I worry about that. And I'm just, I'm kind of going through the mental gymnastics to share with you all my thoughts, because I, I've, I've toiled over this, uh, a lot. Um, the traffic's bad on Seagan and the interstate where, um, D is, but it's also bad where C is. Um, if you want to access that property from the Seagan side, you actually have to take a left turn if you're going north, and then go under the, um, uh, overpass. I made it, I, I intentionally drove past it a few times to see if there was any way that on that piece of property that they could put in a turn after the apartment complex, but before the bridge goes up, and it's a very small, I don't know if they could do it. I'm not an engineer, but it's a really small window. It really backs up when you take that left turn, uh, say, coming from the other way onto that little service road that goes across. If you're coming up Perkins Road, which that's the route from my office, and you're, uh, going where it's two lanes to the one lane, where you cross Seagan, and now you're on Perkins Road between, uh, Seagan and Pecu, it, it, it backs up a little there, but where it really backs up is on all of the feeders, on Seagan coming one way, on Perkins coming the other way. If you get caught in a light, you're eight or 10 light cycles if you're coming straight up Perkins at the wrong time of day. And those were some of the things that concerned me about that property, the flood mitigation issues. Of course, I want to be clear here, and that I think all of them have a little bit of flood mitigation issues, but as I drove past the property on the mall, I mean, you know, right across from the mall, the, the interstate property, I'll refer to it, um, it looks high from the interstate. It looks like it was built up quite a bit. Again, I don't know, and I know you probably, we could probably request, you know, flood mitigation, um, issues. Um, and I guess the, the, uh, so, so I, I would tell you that I, I'm, I toiled with it, you know, uh, both ways. Um, and so, uh, I, but I, I do think, I, my, my idea was to be intentional about it, to pick it, to authorize our consultants and CSRS to give us some more feedback on, you know, how we're going to lay that school out like Mr. Kurtz suggested to us, and, uh, come back, um, with a solid plan. I've already talked about the issues that we have. I mentioned high schools, because if you look at the tax plan, um, that we have one item for purchase of properties in, uh, South Baton Rouge. The elementary school is slated to be, to begin, um, uh, design in March, um, and then I think it's maybe two years after that, the school, the high school, uh, comes about. Um, if you ask me, I wish we would have put the high school first, because that's where the big demand was, and I wouldn't even, you know, be opposed to, if my colleagues agreed, going to them and asking them to flip-flop at where we could build the high school first. You all know, I, kids in my neighborhood, they, they, they go to Tara. It's a long way away. Woodlawn is a lot closer, um, but the reality of it is Woodlawn's overcrowded. Uh, Tara's got, I think, the biggest attendance zone in the whole parish, and, and, and we need, we need relief, you know? And then I'm just going to say one more thing, and I, I'm, I, I appreciate everybody's comments and the way this is, you know, handled. Um, if you ride, you want to come, you want to come take a ride out, out in the area town where I live, because I do live inside the proposed city of St. George boundaries, and, uh, they are building houses, I mean, and neighborhoods are popping up like unbelievable. It's like a, it's like a science fiction movie. They're just popping up everywhere. I ride down one day, and I look, and I'm like, I didn't know there was a neighborhood there, and all of a sudden, there's 40 houses there. So there's a lot of potential students there for us. There's a lot of potential families, and so whatever property it is, we need to do something, and we need to move forward. And I just wanted to make that point, that I'm not necessarily against, uh, uh, C if that's where it fell, and who knows, we might not be able to negotiate on D, and we might have to come back to the board and go for C. Um, but I did want to ask Mr. Kurtz about that. I'm not asking you to take a political position, but I'm asking you your thoughts. Does, does, um, does the, does adding negotiations with both, uh, pieces of property benefit us? And I know what Mike said, and I, I, you know, respect my president, but give me your thoughts on, on if, if it gives us a competitive advantage to, to negotiate, um, or, or go with it.
I, I, I guess we, in answer to your question, I think it gives you a competitive a, a, uh, advantage to get down to some basic terms. Any deal that we do is going to have to have a contingency period to do some inspection, but first, we're going to have to get down to some, some bare price numbers and some things that are access, other things that we're going to have to do and run through, just a little bit of study to make sure. One other point about the, uh, Perkins Road location is that it does have access from the adjacent neighborhood. If we segregated school buses from other traffic, we could potentially look at it in that way. There are a lot of ways to look at things. Uh, they already have school buses that service that area. So, um, there's a, there are a lot of ways that we have to look at, but we have to have a lot of thoughts from a lot of different professions to be able to address fill, traffic, uh, layout, mitigation, utilities, all those things that are going to get down to the, the final design. While it may look like it's there, it doesn't necessarily mean it's there or in the right capacity.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Who's next on the list? Ms. Bernard. You wave. Who's next?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to ask if, uh, Mr. Tatman, if execute was part of his motion, negotiate and execute the contract?
I have, I have execute in the motion.
You do have execute in the motion? Okay, thanks. That's all I wanted to know.
Right, Donna? Yeah. And just for clarification, the reason I put it in there is when you're negotiating real estate deals, you want to, you got to create some flexibility for you guys to go out and get the best price. And, and I'm sorry, I know I lost the floor, but I would like, you know, to, to, I guess, to make the point that, um, there are even other issues, right? If there is mitigation, what is the price of that going to be? So for example, it's not like we're going out and spending $10 million on a piece of property. Uh, we're going to spend as little as we can. Hopefully, we can get a good deal, hopefully not lead, need a lot of mitigation, and hopefully have money left over in the tax plan to do other things. Um, we've always come in, you know, under budget and ahead of schedule, as they always say. I, I'd like to see us come in that way again, but it's more than just the purchase price of the property. It's all the things that go around it, like Mr. Kurtz was saying. So that's why I put execute.
Any other comments? Uh, I think we need to go to the audience on the substitute motion. I'm sorry, Ms. Ware Jackson? Madam Secretary, can you wave to me?
Yes, you just put her down.
Okay.
No, thank you, um, President. Go ahead. Yeah, it was on. Um, I may have missed something, you know, but I was just wondering, um, about property B, you know, I was looking at the sizes, and, um, so, uh, so I may have missed something as to why, you know, these two properties would be better than, uh, than B, just, just from my own understanding. What was it about B that's not as attractive? I was looking at the, the acreage is, um, pretty large. Could you, could you just kind of go back and tell me about B?
Um, I can kind of give you an, an address on both of those. Um, if you take a look at both A and B, they are further away from some of the school systems or school districts that are already under severe pressure. And one of our earlier presentations, we talked about, of course, now, you know, there's a lot of houses springing up everywhere, but previously, we made a presentation that there's about 3,500 acres left to develop in, uh, South Baton Rouge on this side of the interstate. And of that, we had said, you know, that may be another site. If we go too far, we may need another school at some time in the future, and that was discussion that came about from the board. So, um, the preference from previous board discussions were, um, C and D. We included these to make sure everybody understands what we have to choose from. And the longer we wait on making a decision, our problem is, as everything continues to grow and get built, we get less and less choice, and the less choice we have, the more, um, affected that property is. So we have to look at it and think. think, we're looking for a large chunk of land, and finding one is difficult at best.
Okay. Yeah, I was just, I was just looking at that because it was the farthest south and had lots of space between all of them. But, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Are there any other comments in the queue, Madam Secretary? Now, we'll now go to the public if there's any public comment on the substitute motion.
Hi. I listened to comments a few minutes ago where we talked about traffic. So there's, no matter which way we look at it, there's always traffic on Seagan, Perkins, and Star Lane. So any option you choose on either one, you're going to have a traffic problem because Baton Rouge has a huge traffic problem. So that should not be a topic. What should be a topic is, how much would flood insurance cost? Because majority of these plans, if you look at them, at number four on some of them, it actually talked about, they were actually part of the 100-year plan, and 100-year flood plan. And with the 100-year flood plan, FEMA required all those properties to have to purchase flood insurance. So I think that our school system should actually consider how much the flood insurance would cost for that, for that particular property before you do any type of negotiating on purchasing. Secondly, you need to consider how you would actually be able to keep the children safe. Because as I listened to Mr. Chapman talk about the traffic and what he saw when he drove around post the flood, and how close it is in proximity to his office, you need to consider how you're going to keep the children safe. Safety for the children. Evacuating the children in the event that we do have a natural disaster such as another 100-year flood. Natural disasters such as hurricanes, because we did just have an extremely active hurricane season. Evacuation for if we have an active shooter, if we actually purchased the property that is in close proximity to the park. So those things have to be taken into consideration for any type of negotiations, and that information should be made accessible to the public. Because again, these are our children, and if anything happened to any of our children while they are in the school's care, that makes each and every last one of you legally liable. I know that the three JDs up here, or the assumed to be three JDs can actually express to you along with Mr. Shamlin about the legalities in which you would actually suffer if you do not make sure that it is about the children. The children is the important thing, not anything else. Last but not least, nobody actually gave a clarification on whether or not it is a high school, elementary school, or middle school that we're talking about putting on the premises. Because the agenda said one thing, but as you discussed, you said something different. So I just need that clarification for the public, for transparency and accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comments?
So from my understanding, this land will be used for a school, correct?
Our schools. The tax plan calls for elementary, middle, and high school.
Okay. My other question is, is there a possibility that this school will be in St. George's city, if that becomes the case? Or would this school be a part of East Baton Rouge School District? So the question is, is there a possibility that this school will be?
We don't answer questions from the public. That was covered three different times in the discussion.
I'm sorry?
We don't answer questions from the public during the public comment period. That question has been asked and answered several times.
Oh, it has been answered?
Yes, multiple times.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Will this be broadcasted? Can I watch it?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Any other public comments? Seeing none, back to the board. Any comments from the board, Madam Secretary? So the motion we're voting on is a substitute motion. Oh, Ms. Ware Jackson?
Thank you.
We're going old-fashioned, raising hands.
Yeah, I couldn't get to this quick enough. I'd like that, that question answered, just for the convenience of the audience here, whether that property is in East Baton Rouge, I mean, I'm sorry, Baton Rouge, or the proposed city of St. George.
If you would allow me to answer, I think the answer is the property number C is, is unincorporated, so it's not in St. George or in Baton Rouge. And property D is within the current proposed district of St. George, which is not enacted yet, but it is adjacent to East Baton Rouge city limits, and it could be subject to annexation into East Baton Rouge.
It could be subject to annexation. Who would, who would have to propose that? Would it be the owners of the property, or would it be the people who live near the property?
It would be the, and Mr. Kurtz corrected me if I'm wrong, but it would be the owners of the property, and whether it was done before or after we purchased, could be easily something that's in the negotiation.
Okay, thank you very much.
If we so choose to have it annexed. Is that a correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, ma'am, we only have one bite at the apple. Do we have any other? I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but if we make exceptions for you, we end up making exceptions for everyone else.
I'm sorry. Next, is there any other discussions? Mr. Finney? I'm sorry, what? Oh, wait, I'm sorry, we already closed public discussion. We're going, that was a question from the board after the public discussion was closed. Thank you for keeping me straight. If anyone thinks this is very easy to keep all of this straight, it's not. So the public discussion is closed because we've been and came back. So I'm sorry, I did not. She asked a question, and it was responded to. So any other questions from the board? Seeing none? So we're voting on the substitute motion to consider C and D, correct? Madam Secretary?
Please vote.
Collins and Howard. Collins made the substitute motion, and Howard seconded. And it's for C and D. Could you please put up the vote?
Oh, wait, hold on.
Oh, okay, so the motion?
The substitute motion failed. It was
Substitute motion failed, so now we revert back to the main motion, which for a property, which was for property D only. Any comments from the board on property D only? I think at this time, I, did we do property, did we, the substitute motion came after the public comment on the first time, correct? So we do not have to reopen public comment. Property D, I cannot see my screen, so could you please call out anyone for comments?
There's no one.
No one for comments?
Oh, it just popped up.
It's cool. I just want to call for a roll call vote.
A roll call vote? Is that what it's called for? Okay, so you call for a roll call vote, and this is for consideration of property C. So Madam Secretary, would you, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Been a long night. Property D, thank you for keeping me straight. For property D, Madam Secretary, would you please conduct a roll call vote?
District one, Mr. Blue?
Yes.
District two, Ms. Lannis?
Nay.
District three, Mr. Howard?
No.
District four, Ms. Collins?
Nay.
You said nay, right. District five, Ms. Ware Jackson?
Yes.
District six, Ms. Dyson?
Yes.
District seven, Mr. Gode?
Yes.
District eight, Ms. Bernard?
Yes.
District nine, Mr. Chapman. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we go to item three under new business, consideration of requests for the approval of the 2020-2021 East Baton Rouge School System Test Security Policy. So moved by Mr. Chapman, seconded by Mr. Howard. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Madam Secretary, are there any questions and comments? No questions or comments from the board. Any questions or comments from the audience?
Hi. In the midst of COVID, our children are required to social distance. And so I have several questions in regards to test security. Are we, how are we going to administer the test? Because we do know that the novel coronavirus can actually be transmitted. It does not die when it's on surfaces, such as paper. If these, if these tests is going to be administered during the actual via electronically, how is, how are we going to ensure that the children are not able to access other things, such as Googling the actual answer? It's a lot of different things that are not being considered, especially accommodations and modifications for the children with disabilities that would actually need to have these tests administered. Because some of our children actually get workies as a test, which is the test that they take in place of ACT, SAT, et cetera. So I think that when it comes to testing administering, I think that you need to actually have some special education teachers, the ESS department, and some parents who's actually working with their children day in and day out, so that you can actually take into consideration how test security is going to look. Because I mean, after all, we do, we still have a large amount of our population that is at home attending school virtual. So how would testing be administered that way? I mean, we're not doing things on the collegiate way, how the colleges are doing it. Colleges actually make you pay for test administration. So I'm just wondering, how secure would our testing be, and how effective would it be? Because some of our children, as we know, being, having so many that are economically disadvantaged, this is their first time actually being able to utilize an electronic device. Utilizing a laptop or a tablet is much different from utilizing your iPad or Android cell phone. So I think that we need to take a lot of that into consideration. I think we also need to look at how we're going to actually make sure our staff is effectively trained and able to make sure that these tests are properly administered. And that is going to be another cost that we don't have the money to give, because we keep giving it to these unnecessary charters. So I think that if we're going to look at the testing security, we can do one of two things. We can ask for a waiver to not do the testing at all, or we create a committee that consists of parental involvement, as well as the ESS department, more particular, the special ed teachers, and the guidance counselors who are having to use their master degree, their master degree, degree for testing instead of
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any other public comment on the testing security policy?
Just one quick question. Is there a possibility that students will not have to take any standardized testing at the end of this school year?
That's a state decision.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm sorry I answered a question. I broke my own rule. Seeing no other public comment, any other additional comment? Is that a request to speak from Ms. Collins?
Can staff respond to students already taking their standardized tests online because they're started?
Yeah, actually, right now, our high school students are in the end of course window. So we have thousands of high school students across the district who've been engaged for the last three weeks in end of course exams that are required by the state. We will, in grades five through 12, be online for those students. Our third and fourth graders will continue to be paper-based testing. And to answer to the question earlier, we're following, our policy tracks the state policy, and we're following their guidelines for group size and social distancing.
So for clarity, our students, fifth through 12, have been already doing their standard, their annual standardized
Yes, ma'am, this is about the third or fourth year now that they've been taking online assessments.
Okay. And then even though we in the coronavirus situation?
Yes, and we haven't seen any testing waivers yet. And, and testing has to be done at a secure site, so it can't be done remotely. It has to be done at a district authorized testing center that we've informed the state where we're going to test and who we're testing that day.
It would be nice if the state would show some human compassion and waive it during a
I believe they're hearing a lot on that.
You know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments from any other, questions or comments from any other board members? Seeing none, Madam Secretary?
Please vote.
Motion carries. Item four, consideration of requests to adopt policies JD, discipline, and JDE expulsion and student rights and responsibilities handbook revision related to virtual learning and discipline. Mr. Shamlin, would you like to just give a quick comment? Because I believe this brings us in compliance with state law.
That is correct. Act 48 of the, of this year's 2020 legislative session revised Louisiana law to require school boards' discipline policies to clearly define rules of conduct and expectations of students engaged in virtual instruction. It also required us to convene or reconvene the discipline review committee to revise the handbook to also fall into compliance with state law. And so what is before the board at this point are two policy changes, one with regard to expulsion, one with regard to discipline. And the one with regard to discipline adds detailed language defining virtual instruction and discipline related there, too. And the handbook revision provides a specific definition of virtual learning for parents and the connected issues, addresses the connected issues. I do apologize to the board. We wanted to bring this to the cow, but because of the timing in which we received the recommended policy updates, that couldn't happen, so we brought it to the regular meeting. This is required to be adopted prior to December 31 of this year. And so we will be in compliance with an adoption tonight. And that's it.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? We need, okay, do we, I need a motion. Moved by Mr. Lannis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Howard. Ms. Collins.
I put my pen up too fast. Let me see, can I remember? Okay, so one, this reminds me of the request of reviewing our zero tolerance policy overall for our discipline policy. And for the sake of time, in the holiday season, I would just ask that the interim superintendent and staff be mindful of updating me offline on the status of that. And then my other thing was, oh, do we already have it mandatory that our students use a virtual background in class so that we don't have those distractions when those, so then I would just like to recommend that, and perhaps we can revisit that offline? Thank you. I know I'm hearing other places are doing that, and that would help alleviate if, if you can't see mom or brother sister in the background. if you can't see mom or brother-sister in the background doing, you know, whatever to be a distraction. That probably would be helpful to the learning environment. And we can do that, in my studies at Southern University Law Center, to elaborate and help visual, you know, folks visualize what I'm saying. They offer, you know, four or five pictures to choose from. You know, maybe it's the district office, or maybe it's the logo of the school system or something like that for the virtual background. Or in our case, it might be simpler that we choose one. And I don't know if the technology allows automatic virtual background to be used. I don't know. But I'm just offering that to help with the learning environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary?
Please vote.
Yeah, we went to the public. I think we did.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Just to double check, we did go to the public before we did the vote? Did, did we go to the public before we did this vote? My apologies.
I have a, I have a motion, a motion to reconsider the vote by which we just passed that so that we can go back and do it again.
Second, all approved. Can we do that by unanimous consent? Do we have unanimous consent to reopen so we can do public comment? Seeing unanimous consent, we will reopen that for the public comment. I apologize. So if there's any public that would like to vote on the, like to comment on these policy changes, please step forward.
Hi, my name is Maria Harmon with Step Up Louisiana. I was just really concerned about what instances that have occurred since virtual learning has happened. Many parents who, for instance, may not see eye to eye with some of these administrators in the district, what they will do is, we've seen a lot of cases where child protective services have been called. It was egregious claims that were made on parents. And I just really feel like these are implications that should really be looked at in making sure that we don't have staff of the EBR School District weaponizing the Department for Child and Family Services. It's already an issue with retaliation, but this is just going to a whole nother degree. And I even was called to a parent's house that was part of my parent union at Step Up, where actually seen and met and spoke with the caseworker from DCFS. And it was just a transpiring occurrence that went on for a long period of time between administrators, like the principal at McKinley Middle Magnet, and one of the occupational therapists, I believe, that just had an ongoing conflict with our parent. And again, I just really feel like it's extremely harmful in just really understanding how we can criminalize our parents in this school system for simply just speaking up and advocating for their children and make sure that their needs and accommodations are being met, especially if their child has an IEP. So I just want to be clear about that, that we're intentional about these type of safeguards in this policy and making sure that we're not fueling the school to prison pipeline. We already had a case in Jefferson Parish with a child being ostracized in an extreme way as well. So I just felt the need to lift that up. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Thank you for realizing that we were about to violate open meeting law and rubber rules of order by not allowing the public to comment. But on the topic. This discipline policy does not take into consideration our children with disabilities who need accommodations and modifications. When they're trying to attend virtual, their paraprofessional is not at the house with them. So if a child that has a disability such as autism cannot stay still, like my child has not been able to stay still every time I came to this microphone, then what discipline will he be subjected to? Suspension? Recommendation for expulsion? Send me through a manifestation determination review? Send him to the juvenile detention possibly? Cost me unnecessary heartache and money? Then I would have to go after each and every last one of you? What, why do we put our parents through the unnecessary hardship? I think that we need to think about discipline in a more compassionate manner. Because too many times, we try to do things so harsh and so brutal, and what we get is a harsh and a brutal result. If we take into consideration some compassion and some love, then maybe we can get a result of compassion and love. A lot of the children only need understanding. They only need somebody that actually cares. And if we, and if we get the type of reactions that we get from our school board, from the teachers and the staff, then I promise you, it will not be pretty. We will have more and more litigation. So what I ask is that if you're gonna take into consideration a new discipline policy to go into our Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook, you create a committee that deals with, that consists of parents, special ed teachers, regular ed teachers, paraprofessionals, child welfare and attendants. Because those are the people that will be affected and impacted by whatever discipline policy you put into place. Some of the principals, you need to strip autonomy from them because they don't know the ceiling from the floor. So I think that we need to think about this in a more realistic and reasonable way so we can prevent unnecessary harm to our children, but also prevent litigation. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other public comment? Seeing none, now we will go back again to the board. Any comments from the board?
I'm just, thank you, Mr. President. I just, just to, for the sake of the public clarity, this, this policy that was adopted by the state was in direct response to the issue that happened in Jefferson Parish. So actually, what the policy allows for is it gives parents more voice in what happens with virtual instruction. So they have a right to appeal to school boards. If they don't like the decision of the school board, they have the rights to appeal to district court. So this is exactly in response to the things that were brought up during public comment. The state wanted to give parents a more opportunity to have voice as it relates to what happens in discipline on a virtual environment. So just wanted to clear that up for the public.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from the board? Seeing none, Madam Secretary?
I got kicked off, yes.
All right, we gotta do the whole thing according to Mr. Shamlin.
Yeah, just.
Mr. Blue?
Yes.
Ms. Lannis?
Yay.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yay.
Ms. Ware Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Dyson?
Yes.
Mr. Godey?
Yes.
Ms. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Tappman?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Next is organizational announcements. And as I read these out, I want everyone to recognize that this may be subject to change as we revamp our, now that we have the number of candidates and we look at how we will do the community input on the candidates, interviews with the candidates. And so I will read these out, but these are subject to change. And if they do change, they will be duly posted and publicized. So Superintendent Search applicant interviews will be held on January 7th, 2021. Time and location to be determined. Superintendent Search applicant interviews to be held on January 8th, 2021. Time and location to be determined. Superintendent Search applicant interviews to be held on January 9th, 2021. Time and location be determined. Committee of the whole meeting to be held on January 14th, 2021, at 5:00 PM at the Professional Development Center. And I believe we're missing the possibility of a special meeting being called before the committee to hold on January 14th for the election of the superintendent. So I want to put that into the record. Selection, yes, I'm sorry. And then the regular board meeting to be held on January 21, 2020, at 5:00 PM at the Professional Development Center. And again, these could be subject to some changes, and they will be duly noted and publicized as required. Thank you, and the meeting is adjourned.